All right. Good evening, everybody. This is the Town in New Canaan Town Council Regular Meeting Tuesday, March 22nd, 2022, 7:00 PM. It is now 7:04. Apologize, we're getting our Zoom link and everything lined up here. If you want to follow us on Zoom, you can go to the town website. There's a Zoom meeting link there. It's one tap and you're in. It's also available on viewing on channel 79. So to start the meeting, we'll stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Mark, would you like to take the role?
Sure. Robin Bates-Mason.
Here.
Rita Patino.
Here.
Tom Butterworth.
Here.
Mark Jimsky.
Here.
Steve Carl.
Here.
Luke Kaufman.
Here.
Mike Morrow.
Here.
Maria Notton.
Here.
Kimberly Norton.
Here.
Hillary Ormond.
Here.
Christina Ross.
Here.
Penny Young is on Zoom.
Hi Penny, can you hear us? She's in a different time zone and a different place in the world.
I want to make sure we have the right pen.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so next up. Do you have her pen? Our next up, public comments. Members of the public are welcome to speak to the Town Council on Agenda Topics. Schedule for review and/or vote. Speakers are requested to provide their name and street address. Comments will be limited to two or three minutes, subject to a total number of speakers for the evening. Would anybody from the public like to address the council? Seeing none, we'll move on. We have, do we have any, we don't have any minutes tonight, right? To approve?
No, we don't.
Okay, good. All right, budget overview. Tonight, we have the Library, General Government, Board of Ed, Recreation, and DPW. So it'll be a busy night tonight. Again, I want to remind council members to raise their hand to have the floor. And the first up tonight will be Lisa Oldham from the New Canaan Library. Welcome, Lisa.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Probably. Probably that, I think the TV, you can hear better there on this mic, Lisa, so if you sit there, that'd be great.
I share my screen through the. Thank you all for having me here tonight.
Lisa, maybe, maybe pull that mic over. I'm sorry, is that, maybe not. Yeah, that's, yeah, sorry. That's better. Sorry. The challenges of technology here.
So. So I've got a short presentation, followed by a slide with the actual budget. And I can take questions as we go, or we can wait till the end and do all the questions.
Probably easier way till the end.
Okay, great. So it's very similar to previous budgets. For those of you who've been on the Town Council while, you know, there's not an awful lot of elasticity in our budget. And so it's, it's really not especially complicated, but I would like to share just some of what we've been up to for the last year. And some other information, so. Are you seeing that, or is that not yet? Not yet, okay.
There we go, something's happening. There you go.
There we go, okay. Okay, so. In the past year, as we've come out of COVID, the team at the library has been really focused on delivering the best quality in-person curricula of learning for infants, children, tweens, teens, and adults, despite the ever-changing restrictions that the past year has, has brought us. The team have been unbelievably flexible with partnerships, new and existing, especially with other nonprofits in town. And this year, a lot of partnerships with parks and recreation. Our children's team has delivered their full program for the last year, almost entirely outdoors on, at the Y, at Irwin Park, at Mead Park, at Kiwanis Park, all over town. And that's been a wonderful partnership, or series of partnerships. About 80% of the community have an active library membership. So that's pretty great penetration into the market if we were any other sort of business. And these are just a selection of the, the comments that the team on the frontline receive all the time for the service that they deliver. And some images of some of the amazing programs that the children's team in particular put on throughout this past year. We were able to do some things in person in the library, and you can see a science class happening there with some small children, but most of what we did was outside, whether it was science experiments outside, animals, a partnership with mounted troops, and storytime up at Irwin Park. Our adult services team has been taking the programming out into the community with a long-term partnership that we've had with Lapham Center has just grown over the last year. And not only are they doing instruction at Lapham, but also offering office hours for technology help over at Lapham. And our partners with the Nature Center and Land Trust, we've also taken grownups outdoors for history and nature tours, natural history tours around town, working with the Land Trust on both Land Trust land and Nature Center land. So before the pandemic, we saw our programming attendance increase at a pretty good rate. It went up 86% in the years from 2013 to 2020. And we had just over 40,000 people come to programs in the library in the full year that ended before the pandemic. The next set of slides are all comparisons with our peers. And just to be clear, why we choose this group for our peers, they are obviously all in the top 11 now, not 10, rankings with angelic ratings based on taxes and income per person. But importantly, they all have the same financial structure, organizational structure we do. They are all association libraries, which means that they are independent of town, but work in a public-private partnership as we do. Importantly, based on some questions I had at the Board of Finance meeting where there was some misunderstanding, all of these comparable charts that I'm about to show you are the all-in numbers for all of the libraries. So while at a local level, people may measure things or do their accounting differently, I make sure with these charts that it's an apples-to-apples comparison. So it's the full operating costs of each library being compared across these. So, you know, things are really different in this, in this past COVID year. So these numbers are for the year that ended last June, just to be clear, when, when we were fully in COVID. And so as you can see, we are doing well comparatively on our attendance, even though we aren't doing much in-person in the library, we're doing it outdoors, or we're doing it by Zoom. We're still doing really well on a per capita basis when we compare to our peers. And yet, the team are, continue to be really great at delivering all that value for one of the lowest budgets. So on a per capita basis, we're spending less than all the others bar one to deliver that really tough quality that's getting people into the programs. On book circulation, second in our peer group, we're also, I think we're second in the state for circulation of materials in the community. So not only do 80% of people in New Canaan have an active library membership, they're using it, and they're using it to borrow books and ebooks. But again, we're outperforming our expenditures on that. So turnover is one way we measure how well we're doing, and that's specifically around the collection. And that's looking at how hard the collection works for us, and how frequently any given title would turn over. That's the gold standard for us in terms of being able to know how well we're doing at getting in the right books for our community and enough of them. The next series of slides relate to financials. So this is looking at total library operating income. Shall I admit that person? Total library operating income per capita compared to our peers. And this is, this is where I was saying, this is the all-in number that includes all of the operating costs, including the insurances, et cetera. So we've come up a little bit since last time I showed this slide where we were fifth, now we're fourth. So that's progress in the right direction. Our sources of funding, I think this is well-known to this group, but just to be sure, in this past year, the year just gone, the town grant comprised 75% of our operating income. And fundraising and gifts was pretty much the rest of the balance. Fines and charges and the state contributed less than a percent combined. One of the way measures we have across libraries is the looking at the municipal contribution of the library per capita. And again, here, like the previous slide, you see that we've moved from a couple of years ago, from fifth position into fourth position. So this looks at the CPI indexed against that grant over the years 2018 to 2023. And we'll look at a slide in a few minutes, which is the slide I brought back in 2018 when we talked about being competitive to be able to recruit and retain staff. And what we talked about that year was the importance of making a concerted effort over a number of years to get our salaries budget up so that we could not only attract good staff, but keep them as well. And so that was in 2018. So this index starts with that next year. And you can see with 23, with the budget that's before you now, we're making a little bit of a push again to try to, try to get to some parity with our peers and in our ability to attract and retain staff. Another measure. So this is looking at our philanthropy in town, and New Canaan is the most special town. The generosity of our community and the gifts per capita are at the top of both our peer group and the state. You can see there the green line, gifts per capita. While Greenwich, for the year in question, the financial year 21, actually brought in more dollars than us. They were probably getting a lot more attention that year because they were doing a big construction project. But in terms of dollars per capita, we still outpaced everyone in our peer group. And when, and here's just dollars per capita, how we compare to the rest of our peer group. New Canaanites are the most generous community, and it's just phenomenal. And it's, whether we look at it in dollars per capita, percentage of operating, we're at the top, and it's, it's terrific. Here's where the, the funding goes. By constituents, so families, we've made a concerted effort to increase the proportion of our expenses that are dedicated to services to families over the year. That's been a consistent 1% increase per year over the last several years. That's something we're continuing to build. The others have been pretty static. Building, in this case, does not mean the new building, that's just operating our existing building. This is the slide I mentioned from a few years ago, where we discussed how we could get our salaries up to a competitive level. And then this looks at where we've indexed our compensation against the, the Bureau of Labor Statistics Wage Index. And you can see we're, we're tracking, we're still under. But this 23 budget is really important to get us at least moving in the same direction so that we're staying as, we're trying to keep competitive. In the budget, you will have seen that the main driver of this year's increase is compensation. And just to break that out a little bit, it's a 3% increase for the salaries in 23. There's already over 3% increase that we've experienced in the year that we're in because we've seen about 11 retirements over the last 18 months, and we are recruiting in a very accelerating labor market. I've recruited for an accountant twice in the last six months, and that was hard the first time, and harder still the second time. And the budget, which you have in front of you. So I'll stop there for questions.
Questions from the council.
Hi Lisa, could you tell me the source of the charts? You said that all the bar graphs and stuff like that, and to compare the towns, is there a, like a statewide source?
Or the source of the data?
Both.
So is the chart is me, I put them together.
Oh, that's what I meant, like, where did you get the numbers from?
So the data comes from the state of Connecticut.
Is there a website that has all that library data, or?
Yes.
What, what is it? I'm just curious.
Very long URL. State Library, Connecticut State Library, library data. I can find it for you and send it to you, but that's okay. It should be very easy to find.
Okay, thank you.
Maria.
What is the revenue coming, where's the revenue coming from? And I see from 2019, it went down a bit. So I was just curious about revenue. Where does that come from?
On this slide here?
Nope, the actual budget itself. Under total operating income.
Okay.
So other revenue. Under 2019, it was 91,000. It kind of goes down a little bit up. I'm just wondering, where does the revenue?
Oh, so it's, it's grants. One-off gifts. Fines, which have been going down over the years. What else is in there? When people make copies at 10 cents a page, that comes to us, fax, faxing income. So it's room bookings. All of those little bits of income that we get that aren't none of the other things.
I know it's not the mission of the library to generate revenue, but is there any way to generate revenue?
So if you look up fundraising, mail solicitation, and fundraising events, you'll see that we're generating $735,000 this year.
Towards the building.
No, this has nothing to do with the new building. Just like every year, we, 25% of our income is from fundraising.
Okay.
Yeah, so the town, the town always contributes 75% of the library.
Other numbers just kind of.
Yeah, so you're, you're specifically saying under other revenue, where it goes from 91, 91, 1 down. So, you know, and it could possibly be if it is fines and all that stuff, you just don't have as many, you know, with a new construction, there's probably not as many feet running in and out of there, I would think.
So, well, so fines is a good example, right? So my first year, FY14, the budget for fine income was about $90,000. The actuals that year were about $70,000. I'd been here five minutes. I said, why is this so badly budgeted? Why is this so up? And they said, well, well, we started telling people to bring their books back, and we made it easy for them to renew online. And we send them a reminder two days before it's due, and New Canaanites are smart. So that number has gone down consistently over the years. So whereas about 90,000 10 years ago was coming from fines, we're now getting about 30,000 from fines. And I'm not saying that people that pay fines are not smart. We're very grateful, very, very grateful for that. But yeah, in the last year, we have had, nobody's booked a room with us because nobody wants to be in our rooms.
That's a good point. I was thinking that, like, as people start to need, you know, a lot of people aren't going back to offices. So do you think that will start to be a revenue generator and?
Well, it's, it's the plan for the new building. So, right, we have, we have a lot of meeting rooms in the new building, and generating income to offset any new costs is definitely a big part of the plan. You'll remember that you all asked for a five-year projection last year, and that room rental revenue is, is part of how we're hoping to make sure that we offset any new costs with income by, by room, room rentals or booking fees. Obviously, we're going to have the cafe, there'll be some lease income there. And those are the two big things, the auditorium, the potential for people to rent the auditorium for functions. So, so we're, we're looking to bring as much other revenue in as possible. It will largely go against offsetting any additional costs with the new building, so should be sort of neutral looking out.
I remember it was a funny moment, this is five or 10 years ago, in Board of Finance meeting, somebody asked, I don't even know if it was Lisa or could have been predecessor to Lisa, isn't there a way we could increase the fines and get some more other revenue? And, you know, they were looking at each other like, that's kind of counterintuitive, you know? Really don't want to have a lot of people find over.
So, well, the trend nationally is to get rid of fines altogether. Obviously, we still get $35,000, so I'm in no hurry to get rid of it from a financial point of view. Philosophically, I understand the move. We're going to end up pretty close to zero pretty soon anyway with just the direction it's going. I mean, we, it's fallen off by, what is that, 65% in eight years, so it's.
But I think you'll see, as you said, the room, the room revenue will bring that number back up quickly, so.
And of course, I think you know, Maria, because you've gone to some presentations about the new building, and you mentioned people working remotely. There is an entire co-working area on the second floor of the library. That was already a thing in the library before COVID. It's a much bigger thing now. But that is not a revenue generator. That is because that's essential service now for people wanting to work in the library.
Question, Mark. Lisa, you mentioned labor availability. Is it an issue for us? Is it an issue, I mean, just for us? Or is this something that's happening around our peers? Is there anything else we can do to, outside of increasing wages, which is inevitable, of course?
Yeah. Certainly, what I am finding is without putting wages up, I can't get anybody. So, so essentially what happened was in September, our previous accountant decided, after many years of working for us, to retire. She gave us a month's notice. We, we couldn't find anyone on the open market. We went to an agency, which is obviously a more costly exercise, but that was how we found someone. Unfortunately, that person left very suddenly after she was with us all in for about five months. I was left trying to find somebody with, with no notice whatsoever. We found somebody terrific, but the salary expectation was, was more than what we had before. So it's a hard question to answer. I think particularly for financial staff, for accountants and bookkeepers, it's really, really hard. Librarians, they have a lot of choice. I mean, I'm hiring on the national market, so what, what works against us is cost of living. So being competitive for here is, is a big part of that. Because people, again, they do their homework, so wherever they're graduating from, we often hire new, new graduates, which helps. But yeah, it's, it's just tight.
Thank you. Any other questions for Lisa on the overall budget? Yep. All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And I'm sure you'll be back to us with us, reports and news about the, the new library.
So it's very exciting. We are about to lift the final beam into place in about two or three weeks. So just as of tonight, some of you, everybody who's a donor to the project already will have gotten email that says, come and sign the beam. And we're in wave, sending out messages to people in town, come and sign the beam and see your name go up with the flags and everything. So that's very exciting. And then we just learned yesterday that the roof will go on in May.
That's so exciting.
That's great.
Very cool.
Thank you very much. All right. All right, Josh, you're up next. General Government. And we're going to keep you right on schedule. That was, Lisa was perfect.
15 minutes to hit 16 departments.
Speed talk.
So. Thanks for having me, everyone. So let me just go over just like a quick kind of consistent trend that happens to a lot of these, just due to turnover in various departments. It's mainly the salaries and associated benefits, and whether it's the switch from pension to 401A contributions, that's usually where the differences lie in most of these departments. So, without further ado. So, starting with the First Selectment's budget, it is a increase of 5.57%. The two main drivers being a 72% increase in the 401A ER contributions and a 66% increase in the economic development. Again, the 401A is due to someone leaving who was on pension, and then their replacement, Tucker, is now 401A. And the increase of the economic development from 30,000 to 50,000, which supports the Business Development Guide, October for Design and Basic Marketing. Do you have any questions about First Selectment's office?
What page are you on?
So, the presentation should be on.
Yeah, it's not, it's not pulling up on her, some reason it's not loading up.
It's not loading yet.
Anybody get it? Does anybody have it loading up?
I can watch on here.
I can tell you the pages in the actual budget.
It's page three.
So, any questions on First Selectment's office?
That's pretty straightforward, Josh. All right, sorry, I'm sorry, Christina.
Yes, Josh, I just wanted to request the pay, the payroll scale for the officers and the highest earning for all the departments that's not in this report.
So the payrolls should be page 33 in the budget that you have for each of the departments.
Should, it should have loaded for everyone. Okay, try, try it again, guys. It loaded, it loaded up, so you should have it. Everybody see it? Just took a while.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So on to the Finance Department. Also is an increase of 2.96%, which is a four and a half percent increase to salaries full-time. And a, and this is due to contractual obligations and staffing changes. Salary OT went up 4,000, which is 800 somewhat percent. Which is, is more in line with the, it went up to 4,000, which is more in line with the 10-year average of 3.7. And an increase in 401A contribution, oh, sorry, a decrease in 401A contribution of 6.4%. Also due to staffing changes and people being brought in, actually, people being brought in who are on pension and someone leaving, the old controller who was on 401A. Any questions on finance?
Just in general, are these salaries reflecting any new hires?
Yes, it should be up to date.
Okay, but how do we know how many new hires to work per department?
They were replacement versus brand-new positions.
Okay.
So it would be at, at the back where it has all the positions, you'll see where it was a all replacements because we had a new controller, a new CFO.
Okay.
So it's replacements versus a new position.
Thank you.
Yeah, so there's no FTEs at all.
No FTEs, yeah.
Zero, there's not even a half of an FTE, or a half of, half of a person, right? Or is there any part-time? Did you add any part-time?
So there is, we have a person who split between. So there is, we have a person who split between a couple of different departments. And we had where in the where you see where it goes negative in the finance for the 401A normally, it's going up as Josh had said. We, there was a part time person in HR. That person now is a full time person in finance. And that position wasn't replaced because some of the work was outsourced. So that's that was a switch where we, someone who was on on the 401A left and someone transferred in that was on the pension. So that's why there was a decrease in the 401A, but but the positions are all the same, no new positions.
Thank you.
Well, the budget manager is a new position.
Yeah, but your position was still there, like no, no FTEs, no additional FTEs.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, on to the tax assessor's office. That is a decrease year over year of 1.7%. A decrease in full time salaries of 2.96% due to staffing changes. And a 401A contribution increase of 22% also due to those same staffing changes. The increase of seven and a quarter percent for service contracts is due to the annual KAMA maintenance, which is switched from vision to equality. Are there any questions on tax assessor?
It's unusual to see a decrease like that.
Well.
People going out at top stack and then people coming in, it's yeah, from contractual type, yeah, but it is.
But it's, you know, given the challenges that we've had over the years with that's this is a difficult department to keep track of everything, which is amazing, the bank for the buck we get out of the tax assessor's office, so. Are we sure he has all the everything he needs?
I haven't heard otherwise.
He's very, he seems very happy where he is and the new staffer on on track.
Good. Questions?
On to the tax collectors' office, which is a 1% increase over last year, which is really the main highlight is again a 401A contribution increase of three quarters of a percent, so there's not really a whole lot going on there. Are there any questions? On to legal. Legal is just a decrease overall of 16 two thirds percent, which is just due to lower anticipated legal fees because of the collective bargaining agreements, there were more last year, I guess this year. And we're not really expecting, you know, tough to do them again next year.
So so I'm sorry, so I keep asking questions, so let me ask this about this legal, is this the entire budget that we have in the town for our legal? $250,000? Haven't we exceeded that in the past?
I'd have to check, so well, in nineteen it was 302, twenty was 224. Twenty-one is 592, and that's probably where the collective bargaining agreements gone.
Well, yeah, my question is, is to, I mean, it's almost like a placeholder rather than an estimate, isn't it? Or is that, it just seems like in our litigious world, it seems like we're not going down, we're going up, but that's, that's just my.
It's more.
Steve, part of it is the collective bargaining room is getting settled voluntarily without any arbitration costs and stuff, so.
Got it, okay, thank you, Kevin. Follow up, Luke?
Is Mike's bill tonight exceeding this budget?
$1,000 an hour, I don't know.
What page is that on?
Any questions on legal?
Any real questions?
Is 250,000 the retainer?
No, the retainer is, what, it's eight and a half thousand times 12. The, this is, I guess this would probably include the retainer.
Yes.
It would include it, but it it is not only the retainer.
We just won't have negotiation costs, arbitration costs, anything with that because they're all settled.
Okay.
Yeah.
On to HR, which is an increase of half a percent. And this is mostly due, well, there's a 1.9% increase in full time salaries, which is just contractual. Part time salaries is decreasing 80%, which is due to staff being transferred from HR to finance department and some of that's work being outsourced. And there's a 46% increase in physicals just due to just an uptick in hirings and and so on.
Mark?
Can I go back to the legal, sorry, I have a question. Does it make sense to over budget here because you're gonna have to pay the bill anyway and there's, there's chances of that going higher in any given year. As opposed to taking it down. And I realize that the collective bargaining helped us, you know, and that's one reason to bring it down, but does it make, is it fiscally prudent to do it that way?
To keep it flat, you mean?
Yeah, to keep it flat or or not, you know, to be conservative would be to over budget here.
Hey, Mark, I think we're comfortable with that, bringing it down.
Mark, we can increase.
I'm not asking, I'm not asking what I would, I'm just asking.
He's asking the question.
I'm asking the question.
But if Kevin says they're comfortable, that, you know, we've done the analysis and.
And then we have the contingency if something does go above, and then obviously if there's a lawsuit that comes up, that's out of our control. But we have the contingency to protect us if something does come up on that side. Yeah.
Thanks, Anne.
I'm sorry, may I ask a question? How much is the contingency?
300.
Oh, okay. I'm comfortable with that.
Good question.
HR question.
Sorry, before we move on, maybe I can ask Kevin, this is another time, but do we have you know, insurance policies that provide coverage, provide defense costs?
A lot of our, a lot of our defense work is paid for by the insurance company, so.
And they utilize our counsel, they assign their own.
They 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 assign their counsel, they choose the counsel and, you know, most of this is generally planning and zoning appeals and tax appeals and things besides the general legal advice that we get on the retainer. So with, there's very, actually, the other than, you know, they don't pay to defend appeals for our administrative processes, but but they pay for liability. And, you know, slip and falls and that kind of stuff, so.
Well, the retainer covers general.
Generally good advice.
At eight and a half times 12.
Yeah.
Don't have any current litigation pending right now that that council is utilizing?
Well, we we always have pending litigation of some kind, but it's not significant right now, so again, the the number that generally bumps us up if we're going to arbitrate a a collective bargaining agreement, and we haven't done that a few years and they're all settled now for the next three years, so two years, two and a half, three years.
Any HR questions? Okay. Onto IT, IT is just a half a percent increase. Really only due to salaries. And it kind of always comes up, you know, where does a lot of our cybersecurity come from and how is that built into the IT budget as a whole? And so I'll just kind of go through these bullet points that were provided by Chris, the Director of IT. IT uses a plethora of tools to keep, to help keep data and information safe and secure. Internal and external live scan programs with CIS, MS, IAC, endpoint security for all devices on the network. Hardens hardened devices along with patch management. End user training, data monitoring services, access controls on all networks. Many more to help mitigate any and all cyber threats. And we also have a cybersecurity insurance that covers downtime, cyber forensics, data triple, et cetera. And so a lot of that is kind of built into the service contracts and then implemented by our IT personnel. Any questions on IT? Town clerk is down five and a, four and a half percent. The I guess the main driver of the decrease would be the outside contract services decreases 63 and a half percent due to FY22's budgeted software services for document scanning and redacting, that's no longer taking place. Increases are really in part time elections and salary OT, which are really due to the change in voting districts from three to seven voting districts that's taking place. Are there any questions for town clerks?
The town clerk's budget and the registrar of voters are too separate.
Correct.
So what you're quoting in terms of expenses for election is just the town clerk.
Correct, you'll see registrar of voters, which is an increase of 30, almost 35%. Two, so it's, the salaries part time has increased 20, almost 27% due to the Board of Selectmen approval of a pay increase for the registrar of voters effective January 1st, 2023. So that line is increasing from 52,000 to 66,000. And part time elections is increasing 36%. And kind of all of the other line items that are increasing are really due to the increase in voting districts from three to seven, like you said. Any questions for registrar?
So so Josh, the part time elections line, back to the town clerk, there's a, there's a line there of 6,096 in 2021 actual. And then BOF recommended 2660.
Which line is on, sorry?
That's back, I'm back on the town clerks under PT elections, see how it's 20.
PT elections, oh, sure. You're asking why are there?
So, yes.
I think they're just election years that they're.
Right, but so there's a recommended on the 2023 recommended BOF, so is, so we've earmarked, in other words, a third of that, I guess, because of.
The voting, because of the voting districts and it's not a presidential.
Yeah, right.
It's gonna be less of a volume.
Right, okay.
And the voting districts wouldn't push it up, but it's not a, it's not a presidential election.
Got it, okay.
But the upstate ballot, the upstate ballot process can go, more burden on the town clerk, so.
Got it, thank you, Kim.
Any questions on registrar? Okay.
We're gonna be busy.
So now we're just grouping them together. Health, pension, OPEB, and insurance. So health is up 2.61%. And this increases due to just historical claim data and increasing healthcare costs. The contribution to health, town health benefits fund was reduced during the Board of Selectmen to Board of Finance. Or I guess by the Board of Finance from the Board of Selectmen by 150,000. As the OPEB trust is going to reimburse a portion of retiree claims. The town pension contribution is reduced 600,000 after a recalculation of required funding, which was also took place during the Board of Finance. The OPEB is down 40%, which I guess the OPEB was reduced to zero. So it's OPEB and pension, the OPEB was reduced to zero. Let's see, due to use of the OPEB trust to offset the contribution, this was also done during the Board of Finance. And the 401A contributions, let me see. That is for, I think that's the Board of Ed. Contributions in health is increasing three and a half percent just due to annual raises. Are there any questions on health, pension, OPEB, insurance?
Any questions?
Hey, Steve, I might point out, this is an area where we do a lot of work to try to bring the six and a half percent original budget down to four and a half percent because there were things we haven't looked at in a few years. And we've really done great with both the pension plan and the OPEB trust in terms of investment performance and we're gonna look at it every year now rather than every two years in terms of marking to market, so.
Yeah, that's great, Kevin, and you know, many of us watched the Board of Finance talk about this issue, so I think we're all pretty comfortable with it as well, so. But you're looking at it annually is a great idea. Okay, Josh, parking?
On to parking, so parking is a uptick of a half a percent, and this is really the main driver, of course, our salaries, but then also service contracts, it's I mean, it's their biggest increase, which is 16%, which is $400, that's just due to increase in service contracts because of making their two license plate readers now scanning both permit and time because they're down a person, so it's you know, important to have both on one device. Any questions on parking? Okay. Debt service, contingency, and interfund transfers. So debt service, let's see, I mean, debt service usually kind of is what it is, it's up 4%. We have applied 2.4 million of bond, of bond premium against bond interest for the school and town, so that was also kind of one of the ways that we, I guess, save money during the Board of Selectmen meetings. The salary contingency dropped 63% because there are no current open union negotiations. And the interfund transfers decreased 86 and a half percent due to also the use of bond premium to offset tax supported capital. So are there any questions on that?
So if the planetarium is in the Board of Ed capital budget, is that where it shows up?
So the planetarium, I think, is now 350,000, so that's a bonded capital item. So that doesn't directly impact this. The tax supported capital is mainly items that are under 50,000. And so those kind of funnel into this transfer to tax supported capital that directs, directly impacts the the overall expense budget. And so we were able to apply. Go to the next slide, oh, that's, that makes it on there. So this is kind of an overview of the the bond premium that we had going into this year. You'll see the three on the left, those are series 19, 21, 21. So we had an available balance of 3.7 million going into the year. And since we only have a couple options of how to spend that money, either on debt service interest, which it may be debt service interest that's only on specific debts, or depending on the kind of how quickly we spend it, it could be on a more broad field of what interest we can spend it on, as well as eligible capital projects, which are projects we've, or we can get bond authorization for, but have not yet bonded for. So taking all that into account during the Board of Selectmen, we utilized this 2.4 million against the debt service interest. And the 1.18 million during the Board of Finance against the tax supported capital. And that's why you see, you know, historically, tax board of capitals at one and a half to three million and we're at, you know, 232,000 now, which is, we really stripped it as far down as we could. Which, you know, has a really profound direct impact on the overall budget.
The important part, Josh, the important part and to emphasize is that we have to use this bond premium by a certain time or expire, so we have to, we have to use it.
Yeah, so it's, the philosophy is borrow as much as we can.
No, no, just the opposite, just, just the opposite, Mike.
It's not, because you're saying drop down the threshold for tax supported capital to the lowest, to what I would consider a bare minimum. Right?
Well, but we're borrowing less by using the premium, we're, we're, we're.
What?
By using the premium, we're, we're paying for those items instead of bonding for them.
Right.
So it wasn't really a threshold thing that got us to the 232, it's, it's, some things are eligible to be bond authorized, like painting of a school isn't. Because it's more of like a maintenance cost, so that it's really what's left in the tax supported are painting the schools as well as refinishing of the gym floor at Sax, I believe. And that's, those are the only kind of maintenance things that we couldn't in speaking with bond counsel kind of get a proper bond authorization for, so that's why those remain, as you can see, we still have a total of 152,000 of bond premium that can be spent next year on, I guess, interest, debt interests.
And some of them, just like the 2019, we only were able to put it against projects. You weren't allowed, we weren't allowed to put it against interest. So we were restricted right there that I have to go against some sort of project that we had, not a ongoing maintenance, it's just that it can't be tainting, things like that. So we we couldn't, we could have put against more interest, but we weren't allowed by IRS rules.
Paying down an interest is, it's a, it's a great move, I mean, it's.
Yeah, I mean, they both have a direct impact on the, on the expense budget. Yeah.
Yeah, this is, this is a function of very low interest. Yeah, this is, this is a function of very low interest rates, because people don't want municipal bonds, if, if interest rates tick up, they don't want to lose principal, so they, they pay more than the bond principal when they buy them. And we then have to use this premium somewhere, and IRS rules say where, where we can use it, so.
Okay.
In the past, we have allowed the balances that are on the bonds to remain, and then we do a project close-up. And if there is any money left over, we can appropriate to another project later on with a vote of the town council, so I'm assuming that's what you're doing, it's not necessarily going back to paying the interest and principal.
Oh, it is, it is paying the interest and principal where it can be, and then otherwise it's being used to pay for the capital project that otherwise would have been bonded, that otherwise would have been paid out of tax-supported capital.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so that kind of concludes the expenses unless anyone has any questions on them. And the revenues is a bit shorter, finance department is, it's down twenty percent, which is mainly driven by the interest on investments down forty percent. Just kind of the expectation of where the market is headed and, you know, how we've done year-to-date. Any questions there? On to, see, the tax assessor, collector, parking, and miscellaneous. So the tax assessor is pretty much staying flat. Collector is really just a function of, you know, this expense budget, so there's not much to it, it's an increase of three point two percent, but that changes as the budget changes. Parking is a decrease of twenty-one percent, just due to, you know, lower expectation of parking permits, I believe. That's down twenty-six percent. And operating transfers in, that is up one hundred ninety percent, and that kind of is the lion's share of operating transfers in from bond premium that's going to pay off the debt interest. So from that bond premium, we talked about previously. And extra duty, I believe, is, is in there. Yeah. Rita?
So I may have missed this in another presentation, but I would have expected parking permits.
Right, so they did go up from FY twenty-one, which was at sixty-five thousand, but FY twenty-two was expected six hundred fifty thousand, but year-to-date it was only three thirty thousand. And it's kind of, even though it's halfway through the year, I believe they buy in at a certain time of the year, so it plateaus, and it really only is a small uptick. So it's almost like we're at three thirty now, probably hit four hundred, and, you know, expecting next year to be closer to five hundred.
What do you, what is that, what is that a function of, I mean, and again.
It's timing, it's timing, you know, we, we also shifted the renewals, I believe, from June thirtieth to September thirtieth. Going forward, so it's, it's kind of a timing, accounting timing in terms of when the revenues hit, which this year.
Isn't it a factor that you can postpone or defer your parking permit for two years, up to two years, that that has a fact, it has factor in that?
Yeah, I'm not sure, but I'd have to check on that. I'm not sure, probably the vast majority of people probably don't do that, but that may be a factor that kind of postpones revenue.
I'm one of them.
But we could see how, how common that is, and.
Maria.
You know.
So there always used to be a waiting list, is there no longer?
I'd have to check on that.
So, so. So Kevin, I was gonna suggest, you know, after we get through the budget, I, I find it fascinating, but we should have Stacy in and just have a sort of a Q and A, because it's always good to hear from parking and see where they are, both downtown and at the lots, because, you know, you don't need to be a genius to drive around town to see that the, like the railroad lot and some of the lots aren't full like they used to be, and this may be just, you know, we're still coming out of COVID, and you know, it's,
keep in mind, the, the principal reason is because they haven't restored our express trains, that people find it better to drive to Darien and be on the mainline schedule. So until they give us our back, back our express trains, we're gonna continue to see this for a while.
Okay.
Any more questions, tax assessor, collector, parking, or miscellaneous? Okay. So the town clerk revenue is up seventy-three percent. This is mainly due to conveyance fees with, you know, a small part due to recording fees. Think FY twenty-two was budgeted at one point one million for conveyance fees, and, you know, year-to-date as of halfway through the year was at one point three million. I think it's, we're expecting a downturn from there, but, you know, if we're gonna hit two point six million by the end of the year, I think two million is probably a conservative estimate of where we'll end up. Any questions?
Questions?
So general government capital projects, there are really only three. The tax assessor office has a two thousand and twenty-three townwide revale, split a hundred fifty thousand over FY twenty-three and a hundred fifty thousand over FY twenty-four, those are bonded items. And the IT department has their kind of annual IT hardware, software, eighty thousand, and their WAN hardware, software, eighty thousand as well. Those are really the only general government capital projects.
Any questions, Christina?
Do we always bond the revaluations?
I believe so.
We do, and it's, it's done over the life of the revaluation, so it's, it's done over five years. So by the time it comes up for the next five years, we're bonding again for it, so it's not, we're not still paying off when we're bonding the next one, it's amortized over five years.
Thank you.
Rita?
Like I asked this in another meeting, and I just want to say, I want to ask it again, just with technology evolving as quickly as it is, and cybersecurity being a risk, are we budgeting enough? Are we, I, I want to make sure we're safe and that we're doing what we should be doing to invest in our, the technology and the cybersecurity.
Rita, since, since Todd Labrie's profession is technology consulting, you can be assured, Todd's review has assured that we're spending enough.
And Chris doesn't see, that's why we put a more detailed, or Josh put a more detailed background on the IT, because we asked them on, the question's gonna come up, are, are we protected, do we have?
Yeah.
Do they have what they need? And they do, and Chris is very confident in all the things that he was, and his team has put in place to make sure that we are protected, and he, he's had different testings come in to try and do that attack.
Stress testing, yeah.
Yeah, so he, he is quite confident in that.
We, we had a presentation with Chris a while back, and, and we could certainly have him back through again, I think it'd be good for new members to hear from Chris and.
The quick question. I agree, I think we should have Chris back, but one question is, is Chris in charge of both the town and the, the school district, or is it just security?
Just the town.
The town side.
Although they work closely together, Mike, you know, Chris, Chris is, since we provide the backbone to some of the Board of Ed's needs, Chris does support the Board of Ed's staff, IT.
Thank you, any other questions? All right, you guys are right on time. It seems, it seems like that was a long presentation, but it wasn't. Well done, all right, moving on.
Hey Steve, we should take, we should take note that this is Josh's first season as tax manager, so he's done a great job.
Josh, thank you very much.
Did I say tax manager? I meant budget manager.
All right, Brian. Good. You're always carrying a lot of stuff.
I don't have handouts.
Thank you. Very helpful.
Thank you.
I know where there's a secret stash, I'll get you.
Increase your budget.
That's why they have their own pension department.
Say hi, Rita. Welcome back.
Thank you, thank you for having us back, hard to believe it's been a week. We thought tonight, probably the best use of our time would be to start with a discussion on capital, since we didn't get to capital last week, we thought that we could touch base on a couple of things, just hit some highlights and see if there are any questions there.
Perfect.
And then go through the folder and the Q and A and be glad to go more in depth if you tell any of the questions, or just sort of.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so if you have your budget book with you. And if you don't, right on our website, ncps-k-12.org, just click on Board of Education and Board of Education Budget, and you'll, you'll have the entire document.
Sure.
So facilities review.
Okay, good evening.
How are you?
So it's on page ninety-five is where the capital budget starts in the book. So we have an account called District Wide, and we generally put items in District Wide that are gonna provide services for the entire district. This year, we're going to be doing boiler replacements at the three elementary schools. So we have a hundred and fifty thousand in engineering services there, the actual price we just got the other day is fifty-four per school, so we'll absorb the difference in our operating budget. We also have a CHP project that we plan to design for next year's budget at the high school, and the engineering fees for that are approximately fifty thousand. We have a line item for innovation projects, and that is in District Wide because it has not been fully flushed out yet. We are in the exploratory phase right now. Dr. Corente is here, she can give more color to that online item, but it is a placeholder primarily at Saks in the high school, and then we have a hundred thousand put aside for the relocation to two twenty-on. Moving down in each of our schools, you'll see the painting budget is consistent with prior years. The boiler replacement is going to be at East, South, and West. Floor replacement projects are going to be initiated at East and Saks. And a propane tank is going to be installed at West, we had intended to put the natural gas there, unfortunately, beyond the best efforts of our first selectmen, we were not able to get it up there, so we're gonna swap out the oil tank there and put in propane. So that's gonna take place this summer. Moving out to Saks, we have some parking lot repairs, we need to refurbish the gym floor, it's due, it's about ten years into its current finishing bathroom partitions, and we have a need to update, upgrade the interior of the elevator, there's two elevators at that school, we have students that need relying on those elevators to get up to the upper levels, and they're failing, so it's time to do them. And this pricing here was a bid price, so we feel comfortable with it, providing they can find the parts. Is, did you, did I understand you correctly, you're refurbishing the interior or the elevator itself? We're not removing the cart, we're just replacing all the mechanicals. Oh. And the pulleys, and the electrical panels. And then just moving over to the high school, the auditorium lighting system, this will finish it off, we have a hundred thousand right now currently in a budget that's carrying forward, and this went out to bid and has been opened. The refurbishment of the planetarium, would you like to speak to that?
Sure, love to, I speak about it every time, every chance I get. So the, as you know, the, the planetarium at the high school is circa nineteen seventy, back in the day, there's a question about, do we put in a pool, or do we put in a planetarium? And knowing that there was a pool across the street, they had, I think, building committee wisely made the decision to put in a planetarium. The, unfortunately, the, again, the mechanicals, the electronics, the projector itself is also circa nineteen seventy, so without going too much detail, the one person in the country who was able to service it is retiring at the end of this year. So we're not going to be able to maintain a program without the refurbishment. But besides that, and I think equally importantly, there's an opportunity to do something really special, I think really great, for the community, for the school, for the kids, K-12, and the new technology is really very, very different than the technology that's in the planetarium now. The, what we have in the planetarium now is Star Trek One with Captain Kirk and Mr. Spock, and what we're looking to do is just catch it up to where we are now, we're not looking to get, you know, far out there. But, but the new technology really does make a big difference, and what will, what it'll do is really lower the barrier of entry for our staff. So with a couple of hours of training, anyone is going to be able to get in there and use that, and the programming now is interdisciplinary and cross-scripted, so it'll be usable for any, any discipline really to use it, our math features can go in there and use it as a way to show graphing at a large scale, things like that, I mean, it's really, if you can imagine it, you can use it, it'll run PowerPoint as well as it runs, you know, planetarium shows. The content's important, but first we've got to create, you know, really refurbish the dome, we, the chairs are, are long overdue for replacement as well, many of them are broken, whatever, so it's the chairs, it's the dome, it's the sound system, and the, the projector itself, the control panels. The, we said from the beginning that we'd look for this to be a public-private partnership, and so we, we talked to the Board of Finance about that a little bit, we've got some folks gearing up and getting ready to go to help out with that fundraising. And, and I, we've been to a couple of planetariums, one over in Fairfield at Sacred Heart, another one, Region Twelve has a planetarium, and I've been in contact with that superintendent up there, talking to her about things. So we've, you know, we're doing the research and pulling these things together, we hope to have a demo for all of you and others that are interested in the next couple of weeks, and I'm working with, with the projector company to pull that together, and as soon as we have it, we'll let you know. We would do one during the day for staff and those that it's convenient for, and then another one in the evening for anyone who's, who's interested in learning more. We did that about four years ago or so, Tom was there, some others were there, and it's really amazing to see the immersive, to experience the immersive environment that a planetarium creates, so we have this jewel, and it's just time to invest a bit and make it shine again, we're excited about it.
So questions on the planetarium while we have?
Just one comment, just to put into perspective, the planetarium at the high school was built one year after the man landed on the moon, so it's quite open today.
Yeah, there we go.
And he didn't need it, because he had a firsthand view.
Well, I mentioned that I was over in Fairfield at the Discovery Planetarium, which was wonderful, and they've just finished refurbishing that, and when you walk into the, the planetarium, the whole museum there, they have their projector in the middle of the museum as an artifact, and you can look at it, it's really, so I started talking to them, I said, then, that's wonderful, what a great idea, they said, yeah, it's from nineteen seventy-six, can you believe it? That is young, you pulled it early, you know, you're getting another six years out of that thing.
Steve. Brett, so some people think we shouldn't fund the planetarium, so what would that space look like if we didn't use it for that purpose?
Well, initially, my first reaction to that is, we do have courses, we, we have an astronomy course at the high school, we've been running that for years, we, we rely on the planetarium to run that course, so we'd have to eliminate that course unfortunately out of our program, it wouldn't be able to teach that anymore. We run about, you know, four or five sections a year of the, of astronomy through there. The, so first that would be, that'd be a loss, I think, for us, for our school, for our kids and our program. Secondly, I mean, it's, it's a larger-than-average space, it has, again, the dome is all carved out and everything up above, you, what would it look like? We, we would use it, it would only be good as a general assembly space, good for storage of tall things.
Hillary.
I fully support the idea of refurbishing the planetarium, I was lucky enough to take my daughter when she was pre-K, I think, there for a field trip from toddler time, and it was fabulous, and it's a huge selling point when I'm trying to get people to move to New Canaan for the schools, I said, can you believe it, we have a planetarium in our high school. I think it's a huge differentiating factor for us, and a gift to the town, and I was thoroughly impressed despite the fact that the projector is older than me. And it was, it was just a wonderful experience, my daughter still talks about it many years later, so I, I do think it's a worthy investment. You know, it brings our kids to space, what more can you, I grew up with a planetarium in, in my hometown, and it was the best field trip ever, and I, I just adored it, so for me, it's, it's a little bit personal too, but I, I think it's fabulous, so I hope that we can, we can make it happen.
Yeah, I feel similar, I mean, the, the experience that you and your daughter had with the planetarium, they called it, they call it dots on a dome, right, because it is that old school, it's just the stars in the sky, and now with the technology and the, you know, the, the resolution and everything else, they're really able to create something that's truly immersive for people, it's really.
And it's nice that you allowed other kids from the community to come in, it's not strictly for the high school, it really is something that serviced, you know, the, the nursery school kids could come in for a field trip during a school day, that was really special, so I think we need to think of it more, you know, yes, it would serve an AP class, and yes, it would serve the high school students, but it really is a gift to the entire community, and it's an investment for the whole community, and so I think that that's something to consider.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more, we're even talking about ways to, you know, have evening performances, in fact, you know, have other groups using it for different reasons and purposes, and the way, again, the, the technology, it's, in essence, you set up right, it's like an IMAX theater.
Right.
You do all kinds of things.
The previous president announced that they were starting a new department within the federal government called Space Force, I think. And I think we need to be on the cutting edge of where the government is. And I think the planetarium is just right.
Maria.
Can you have a Pink Floyd light show? That wasn't.
Oh, I think it's to that, Maria. Do it.
I actually taught in a school in Norwalk that had a planetarium and they closed it down. And actually, we used to bring our kids to a elementary field trip and it was great and integrated with the curriculum. And they did close it down and it's pretty sad. My only worry is, is there enough money? I worry, what if we, what if we didn't do it this year and did it another year? What do you think about that? I'm sort of wondering with supply chain and costs, like, would it be, would there be enough money to finish this? And what, if we had a year, could we maybe get grants to supplement it? You know, I'm just worried about the cost, if it's not enough.
Well, the goal would be to do it as soon as we have the money raised that we need because of that program at the high school. So if we were to wait a year, that means a year that we would have to pause that program. We wouldn't be able to run that. I do, in conversation with the projector company, and there's only a couple of them out there. And there's one big player who we've been in contact with for a while. She said the prices have been relatively stable. So even from when they came out about four or five years ago, they had developed some quotes for us. The technology has advanced and improved. And she said that the cost of the, of all of it, the install, the whole thing has been, has been pretty stable. So we'll get the exact numbers to know. But the, I think that, that's where the public-private partnership will be helpful. And we'll be working with the PTCs, with the Board of Education, with, you know, other folks in town to build that interest and do, give the demo, show people what it's all about. You know, if we have to wait because the funding's not complete, we'll do what we have to do. But I do think that there are some, also some options, some seating options and other things that can give us some different price points where we can decide based on where we are too. So we can prioritize a bit. First, we have to repair the dome. Years ago, it was painted, a portion was painted and they need to go through and fix all of that. And, and then it's the projector and the sound system and then the chairs. So we could even sort of phase it a little bit. Because it would work with the existing chairs. It's just some are broken and other things, so we do need to replace them. But if everything else was in place, we could still use it and then do that maybe the following year. So we can make some of those decisions along the way.
Okay, great.
Did I miss it? Did you give me a ballpark scope of what the total process project would cost?
Yeah, we were putting it north of six hundred thousand or so, probably about seven or so, all in, depending upon, again, sort of where we go with it. There are different options. There are, you can use two cove-mounted projectors, you can use a singles, a single center projector, think, options like that. The two cove are a little trickier because they overlap, so there's more expense in maintenance and upkeep because you have to have them calibrated more often. You know, some of those decisions will determine kind of where it falls in the end.
All right, so we'll wrap that discussion up. But I, I think just to echo Hillary's comment and Brian to follow up on your comment about the community and the way this could be used, you know, broadly, would really help support the idea of spending the tax dollars on this project. And it's, I think if we were able to get programming for the town after hours and, you know, bringing in all the elementary schools into this, I mean, it's, it's a huge win for the town. I mean, it's, I, you know, I, I'm old, but I actually, year six or seven of that, that technology, I was blown away back when I was a freshman and became a high school. So I can't imagine what it's like now. So I, I fully support the idea as well. We just had to figure out how to, how to privately fundraise and, and get there, so.
Could we get some kind of an estimate, like an idea before just what it looks like? The camera, whatever it is, the seats, the carpet?
Yeah, I'm hoping to have that demo. I was trying to do it this month, so I'm still pushing for that if I can. I don't know that I'll do it, I'll be able to get the people out here. They're coming up from Pennsylvania and they're going to be in the area for some things, so I'm trying to make that happen.
There's not many people buying planetariums, maybe they'll make a special trip.
Yeah, that was my point, exactly. And then first she said sometime in May, I said, no, 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 we need, let's move this along. So we will once that demo, once we have that date confirmed, we'll make sure it goes out far wide.
That's great, thank you. All right, let's move on. Oh, sorry, Luke, go ahead.
One comment is to build tape, say it's relatively stable, the cost of everything. To have something on tape, given the rise of costs of literally everything across the board, saying something's relative. If we had a cost estimate today or a year ago and saying, okay, it's up ten percent, given the market's up thirty percent would be a positive thing. I don't know how many people are doing this right now, but I think just to go on record and have a, have a number and then size and scope on what that's going to cost would be beneficial.
Sure, yeah, I think once they come out and show us some of their features and we start to, again, go make some of those decisions, they'll be able to share that with us. We do have the estimate from twenty sixteen, again, I don't have the exact date. So we have that.
I'm new, yeah, perfect.
We have that baseline, so.
Probably about two fifteen, two thirty-five at that time. And then we're premiums about five now, so a lot different.
Yeah, and there's multiple vendors involved as well because it's a seating vendor, it's the, whoever's going to do the repair.
Place to our advantage to have those numbers.
Yeah.
Christina.
Although equipment has remained, the prices remain steady, labor costs have increased. So if we postpone another year, you're going to see an increase on that side of the project.
Well, the spun raise like crazy.
That's right.
A lot of enthusiasm.
Just one real quick one. I, I know, I'm going to make a comment, but I'll pose it as a question because that's what we're supposed to do, right? Do you agree that? With the PTCs and other organizations, I mean, one could be optimistic about the ability to raise the private money for a project like this.
I'm very optimistic, absolutely. And we're, we're putting a team together that'll spearhead it. And again, once you're in the space, you experience it, you see it, you feel it and sort of imagine your, your own child sitting in those seats and having these experiences as they go through K through twelve. And it's a unique and special, not unique, but rare and special opportunity for, for our community. Great.
All right.
Okay.
Clearly, anyone born in the sixties and seventies, into New York City, met their buddies, so you'll be able to raise the money.
Hmm, oh, yeah.
How about the fifties?
There you go, my bad, it would have been the fifties, born in the fifties and the sixties.
Moving on to sped vehicles. So we continue with our recycling of our sped vehicles, three per year. It's worked out really well for us and hopefully the supply chain will pick up. But, and thank you, that's worked out well. The maintenance vehicles are really in desperate need of being recycled. They're fifteen, twenty years old. They're literally in repair all the time. So we need to go with something more reliable and get another fifteen to twenty years out of it. And then finally, with the technology lease, it is time, we've been at six hundred thousand a year, which is a four-year lease at a hundred fifty roughly a year, to boost that up to eight hundred. When we went to one-to-one last year, we literally drained our leasing money, which was fine at the time because it gave us the ability and the leverage to provide our students and the staff with what they needed for remote learning. So it was a blessing to have that. But it also put off a number of other important projects and replacements that were on our schedule, namely the, the smart boards, which are a key instructional tool for our teachers. And they're aging out anywhere between nine and eleven years and they really need to be replaced. So in addition to the one-to-one, having that requirement, we're going to have to bump it up to eight hundred, which is from one fifty a year to two hundred over the next few years till we get close.
Okay. Any questions on that? Technology is expensive, but we need it.
And in the budget binder itself, there's the five-year capital plan that you can look at.
Just to add, one thing to let you know is we had had West Elementary School's roof replacement project done for this coming year. We delayed that because of the, the pipeline, the timing on materials. And when we did that, we actually accelerated the boilers because they're in need of repair. So you're going to see that difference if you compare year over year.
Thank you, so the, we can go to the folder that you have.
Yep.
That, I know has lots and lots of paper and I apologize again, it wasn't a great day for one of our copiers to go down. We're good with everything that's there and there's not apologies in advance. But, you know, we've numbered it, numbered the pages, numbered the questions, I think, let's just sort of summarize. And I'm glad again to go into more detail around anything if, if you like. The, we tried to categorize them just for conversation sake, correct? So there are a couple of questions around the healthier start time initiative. You know, one was about the, what if we just shifted, what if we shifted the times? We've got a three-tier system now. We have grade seven through twelve that begin at seven thirty. We have Saks five and six that starts at eighteen and South starts at twenty. And then East and West start at nine oh five. So if we just, if we shifted the high school twenty minutes, could we then sort of try to compress the other two tiers? So they don't have to move twenty minutes correspondingly and not, you know, spend the money on the additional buses? The, when we started this project about, back in twenty seventeen, we had a consultant come in to take a deep dive into our current transportation system. Because the hope was we can squeak out some time, maybe we can find five or ten or fifteen minutes and try to sort of maybe do a couple of things with the routes. That consultant came in and the feedback after his deep dive was, you run one of the most efficient systems I've ever seen. He said, there's not, there's no time that you, to be gained with, with the buses you have. There's no, there's not a way to fix that, to get to, to find more time. So we saw, we kept doing our work and whatever, he said, you know, let's have somebody else come in and take another, get a second opinion on this. And Carl Garnier and others were, you know, wanted to have somebody else take a deep dive. So we have somebody come out from Colorado to do that. And actually was the last Board of Ed presentation in March prior to the close. He did his, his own dive, you know, we give, and when they do that, we give them all of our data, we give them years of run data, we give them ridership on the buses. They have a lot of, you know, a lot of information that they're working for. He came out completely independent of the first and said the same, right? That you, the, the system that we have, and this is, that's what happens when you have an engineer managing your transportation system, right? Roy does an amazing job. So the, so if we move with that understanding, recognize that if we move the first tier later, we have to move the other tiers the same amount. That we can't, there's no time to be found. So you can do that, we could start the first tier anywhere we want, but we have to move the other tiers at the same amount. We can't, we're not buying time in between. So with that understanding, when you move that high school and you push off that third tier, whoever it is, right now it's East and West, you wind up in a situation where kids are getting home in the dark. And one of our sort of non-negotiables going into this was we don't want kids to come home in the dark, especially our youngest. But we don't want anyone to be getting home in the dark during the winter time. Another non-negotiable, of course, is we don't want kids getting on the bus in the dark either. And so we, that's where we did research around civil twilight and, you know, difference between sunrise and ambient light and all that kind of thing. Now, I will share with you, so Roy and I were laughing because he did, he ran thirty-one different scenarios, you know, as we, we did this. And we thought it was thirty-one and done. But with the Senate unanimously approving daylight savings time, all bets are off once again. We'll just see, because if that would have happened, then we wouldn't need our non-negotiables of having kids in the dark waiting for the bus and we'd have to look at things. But at least I know if we have to look at things, whether it's because of that or because of something in Hartford, which I get to in a moment, we've done so much research around all of this that we're very well positioned to, to make adjustments if we need to. The Board of Ed and, you know, others after, after taking a very deep dive into all this and after speaking with different stakeholders, you know, made that decision to, to go with, I guess it was scenario B, but I guess we should call it A now that it's the only one. The scenario that has, moves at the half an hour. Now, you could say, well, why don't we just kind of move everything a half an hour? The, the challenge is, again, the system we have is as efficient as it's going to be with the resources that we have. So what you're doing with those additional buses is you're buying time. You're, you have the ability to compress the tiers by adding buses, therefore shortening the, the runs because you have more buses picking up the same number of kids. And what happens too is, you know, those, those tiers, there's a couple of different variables that factor into it. It's the length of your longest run as you're doing this, right? Because you're not going to, you can't set a school schedule that you know is going to start before all the kids are there. So you have to think of, think of your longest run. But it's not just the run, it's also the time for kids to get off the bus and to get into the, into the classroom, right? So you've got to give five minutes or at the high school, you've got to give ten minutes and you've got to factor that part in. And we think and talk a lot about the mornings, but it's really the afternoon is equally, if not more challenging. Because at a high school, you know, that bell rings and then the kids have eight minutes or so to get to the bus before the buses roll off the, off the property. But in the elementary schools, we're boarding the students at the end of the day, right? We don't just say to kindergarteners, go find your bus, right? So this is all within the six and a half hours of their day. So where the high school day has that extra eight minutes to get to the bus in the end, the, the next tier, the buses have to be there at the end of the day for kids to start loading. So again, those are some of the, the many challenges. As you know, we have a hundred twenty-five miles or so of roads and about a hundred and fifty cul-de-sacs here in town. Like that's how New Canaan is built, it's a part of the neighborhood field that is so great about the town. But it's not all that helpful when you want to speed up your bus runs, right? It's so, so we have policies that manage whether or not a bus goes down a road and things like that. But the, what we're doing with the additional buses is, that's what's allowing us to shorten the time between the tiers from where we are today. So that if we start that first tier at seven, I mean, at eight o'clock, the next one, we're, we're pegging right now at eight forty. And we're working on it to see if there's, you know, some ways to sort of carve a few minutes out of that. We won't know until we have the actual students and the ridership. So many of our kindergartners have already registered. So we're at, we build it with the real kids, you know, so that we can do it. As an example, and again, I know, I know we've gone through this for, you've been on the ride for a while, so I don't want to belabor the point. But there are certain pickups that take an awfully long time. So if someone who might live on the Wilton-New Canaan border, you know, a bus doesn't go to that, go to a stop and then just reverse. You've got to drive until we can find a place to turn around. So that can be an eight-minute stop, right? So you've got to pick up a child and then find a place, turn around and bring the bus back into town and do those things. So those, there are lots and lots of variables like that, that we, we work on. How do we, if that's the case, how do we then shorten that, the rest of that run? So that those eight minutes can be absorbed in the course of the, in the duration of all the other runs that happen. And it doesn't have to push out the, the tier time, does that make sense? So when you think about what's, why the buses for that time, that's what we're doing. We're buying the time between the tiers so that we can create a system where no child's waiting in the dark, no child's getting home in the dark. And, you know, we're trying to be as efficient as we can.
Brian, thanks for that. I, so I understand you, the plan is subject to continued modification as we move along. And certainly this intervening factor of the Senate bill changing the, that's going to kind of require probably some more tweaking. The one question I have is, and I think the board was on this email, there was a letter signed by about a hundred parents asking, basically having an issue. Could you care to respond to that email? I, I just received it and read it about three hours ago. Are you familiar with what I'm talking about?
You know, familiar with the, the communications around this, certainly, no, true. I don't have that exact email, that specific, because I'm not on the Board of Ed distribution list, but.
The, apparently the, the issue is that. Is it wise to spend this amount of money considering that, at least as far as I understand, the concern being that the, the change that's currently on the table, the Plan B, that's not Plan A, it doesn't go far enough. So it was a concern that why are we spending that kind of money? Or something that doesn't go as far as enough, you know, air quotes, in, as characterized by those parents. I'm just looking for a response, I'm not giving.
No, completely, it's, it's sort of frames the, a lot of the debate and the challenge that the Board, what has been, the Board of Education has been working through for years and intensely in the last, you know, probably six, eight, ten months, right? That's, that question about, you know, the, how much of a change is the right amount as we do this? And as we looked through research, and there's tons of research that really, even the start-school-later research says, do something, right? Make a change. If you're before eight o'clock, you know, make a change. And you'll see on their website, they'll say eight o'clock is an awful lot better than seven thirty or seven fifteen or others. It's, there are some that are go, some in, in the United States are going to nine o'clock, right? That are looking to move out even further with this. So I think there's, there's definitely a community context to making this decision. The, the variables that the Board of Ed weighed, you know, included the experiences that we've had certainly through the last couple of years through the pandemic and, and all of the disruption that that's caused. They did look at changing in schedules at the high school and going to a block schedule and, you know, what difference that may make for some children where they, with a rotation, so they'll have sleep-ins more frequently that are longer period and, you know, fewer classes and those things. And, you know, the ultimate, the goal of doing this, you know, it's, and we've said this from the beginning, the goal isn't to change the start times. The goal is to create the healthiest possible system for our students. And this is a component of that, but it's not all of it. So in looking at all of those things, the, the decision was made by the majority of the Board of Ed that this, the move to eight o'clock for that first tier was the right one. And I, and I support it, you know, I agree. I think that it's something that we can, we can get in place, we can make it work. The, one of our challenges with this scenario that was this, you know, the other scenario. The, one of our challenges with this scenario that was this, you know, the other scenario, was the time between the tiers, again, going to part of what happens at the end of the day and in the morning, can, could, could we do an eight o'clock and an eight-thirty start? I don't know that we could. That looked like that second tier may have been going to more like eight thirty-five. And that, you know, that five minutes makes a difference for high school students. You know, because now you're talking about them, their dismissal time being after three o'clock and what that could mean, not just for sports, but for all of, all of the ecosystem of their lives. So.
Sorry, Ryan.
No, it's okay. It's okay, Mike. So lots of variables were put in. I think that there is no one answer that everyone's going to love, which is part of what makes this difficult. But I think that we're on a good path to make an improvement on behalf of children.
Right, just a slightly different question. In terms of whatever the plan is and however it pans out, early morning programs for the parents who have, you know, low-income parents, what's what's happening there? Appreciate if you can comment on that.
Be glad to, actually. We've been pretty active with that. The, so last week at our elementary schools, we ran meet and meet and greet events where parents of the elementary students were invited to come in, because we, we haven't done that in a couple of years, right? So it's all been virtual through Zoom, and we said, this is the time. So our parents came in, they were able to sit in their sons' and daughters' desks, they were able to, they read the notes, they met the teacher, they met each other. That was, it was a great experience. And one of the things we did was have a group there who is working with, we're partnering with to provide after-school care for the elementary, really K up through five, six. They'll go higher if there's a need, but they're, we're working with them. It's a national group right at school. So they, it's a flexible model that's really meant to complement the other offerings that the town already has. And they, they had great interest, you know, throughout that. So it was a very positive experience there. As far as the morning goes before school, if there's enough interest, they they're more than happy to get a program up and running. And if there's not, we'll look at getting an early bird program going at each, all three of our elementaries as we have now at East and West. And that's an in-district sort of self-funding program where there's a tuition for families that pay and they have supervision through a teaching system or somebody else. So we've, we're looking at before and after school, we're looking at the needs for K five, K six specifically, but also even seven, eight if necessary. And again, just trying to add to the portfolio, you know, the Y has wonderful programs, the Nature Center has excellent programs and they're developing more. There's, there's already, the parking rec has great programs. What right at school does is bring in a little more flexibility where you can sign up for one through five days a week. You can buy a pack of maybe ten times per month that you can use when you need to use them, you know, that kind, you can go stay until six o'clock at night if you need be or be picked up earlier. All, and there's a scholarship available too for families in financial need. So the program is, it it adds a little more, it's a little more flexible for families that might need it. And, you know, and I think that's something that adds to the offerings that we've always had.
But that would not interfere with the bus schedule. That's a drop-off and pickup by the parents.
That's right. That's right. That's for parents who might have to get to work prior to the start of the school day, or maybe they're not getting home until six o'clock.
I just.
And they need somebody to, you know, something for their children to do.
Hi. I really appreciate all the work that you've done on this. Obviously, it's something that I've been following for a number of years. One of the concerns that I've heard from some parents is is a bit twofold. There's some confusion about how the the new new start times, I'll call it, that what's now the scenario that's being implemented, how it came about, because obviously last spring, one scenario was adopted and there was a townwide referendum on it where, and and so a lot of people thought that the issue was settled and they started making plans and they thought that this was done. And then in the late, I guess, the end of last year, the tail end of last year, a new scenario was proposed. But from what I'm hearing from a lot of parents is that many of them did not hear about this new schedule until the elementary school meet and greets last week. So it hasn't necessarily been communicated to a lot of parents. And so that's causing a bit of confusion and, you know, feeling like it hasn't, there there was surprise that from the South School parents, especially because they weren't, they didn't know that they were going to be starting at a later time, for instance. So I guess they're asking questions, why was there this change in December after there had been a townwide referendum, so people could have spoken then or voted a certain way? What precipitated that change? And then why hasn't this been communicated more broadly to the public school system?
Okay.
I think the two questions that have been asked.
No, that's fine. That's fine. The change itself came through, I would say it was listening to many stakeholders. It was, we read a great book over the summer called Think Again by Adam Grant. And, you know, we started, it sort of led to some conversations and the conversations with students and conversations with parents. And I think in truth, it comes in part from a desire from, by the Board of Ed and the administration, all of us, to always sort of check and recheck and make sure that what we're doing is the right thing. And so we said, we need, let's go through this process. Let's see what this would look like and what this, how this might work. We had been developing the other scenario. We saw that it had some challenges around some of the times between the tiers. We, so we worked this one through. This was thirty-one. And it took a little time for Roy to do that because this where the school year is getting started. And again, when we put the the times, the numbers forward, we know that people, a lot hinges on that. So we try as much as we can to prototype those runs, you know, we try to really build them out based on the kids we have. And it takes time building a whole alternate transportation system. So we did that in the, in the fall and the board, you know, we have new members in the Board of Ed. They wanted to get up to speed on all of this because it's such a consequential decision. And they did a wonderful job doing that. We held multiple Board of Ed workshops and opportunities for discussion and for us all to learn together. So the diligence certainly was there. I think it came from really a drive to stress test and make sure that the, what we're doing is the right thing on behalf of, you know, all of the, all the families and everybody. The communication part, you know, we've done just prior, I I was on a podcast with Mike Dunin, and, you know, while I'd like to thank everyone in town listens to that, I know that's not, that doesn't cover it. But it has a decent audience. Thank you.
I listen.
But we've, we've worked to do our best to try to, but, you know, we also know that there's a lot going on with, well, to be frank, I mean, the pandemic has been more of a disruption than we expected in this year. So a lot of communication was still focused, you know, just recently that I've been able to pull away from some of that, you know, on the, on the pandemic side. And we are planning, we just talked recently with our communications committee that's come together on the Board of Ed, around communications, around this and, you know, a few, some other things. So I had hoped that the word was out. I'm thinking back to the, the budget presentations that I did with the PTCs. I know we talked about it there, and I think we've had some opportunity to, but we have people that are are being caught by surprise and we haven't done it enough. And so that's good feedback and we'll, we'll fix that.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much. And thank you for all your hard work. I, I can't let that go unsaid. Thank you.
I mean, if one thing's for sure, we're not slamming the door, you know, we're not passing this thing forever. If, if you guys have proven anything, you've been flexible, you've already revised it ten times since we, since we talked about it in the beginning. So to me, this is like, let's get started and see how it goes. We're not going to know until we, and and Roy is one of the best at trying to figure out how to make everything work. So I'm very confident. So.
Thank you.
Thanks for the work.
Of course.
We won't take that much time with every one of these.
I think I've now gone longer than we did last year.
That was important.
No, I apologize. But, yeah, again, we're here to help. Now, some, the reason why you have the folder and the other information, some of the questions we thought, we'll get, we're going to just give you exhibits, take a look, come back with questions. So just, again, I'm glad to go into anything, but the.
And, and Brad, we can have, we can have you back again. You don't have to bring everybody out. I mean, you know, obviously, we may want to see you one more time, but, you know, everybody does have to come. So and we, we certainly appreciate. We've got Board of Ed members here tonight, and we appreciate you guys coming and. Yeah, you brought, you brought the whole gang, so we appreciate it. But.
They're here and supportive for us and respectful. Thank you. Thanks, Steve.
Go ahead, Mark.
I was gonna say, can I, since the, some questions you have supporting documentation, I, it's self-explanatory. We probably skipped those.
Yeah, take a look and if there's any.
Senior administration, that question seems to be answered. You provided us your contract, so I mean, I don't think it's.
Yeah, we don't need to go.
In our interest to go through your contract.
Four does every year.
Yes. Maybe we could go to the, see if maybe.
Yeah, we could jump to some general budget. Let's do that. Page three in the bottom.
Okay.
And actually, this will bring us back into the budget book, to some people's favorite pages of the budget book. If you go to page thirty in the binder itself, which is the why the budget changed, so breakdown. Joanne and her team, each year, as we build the budget, you know, we build with our sort of top-down, bottom-up as it all comes together. And then they go through sort of line by line, object by object, and really detail out every sort of, every dollar up, every dollar down that gets us to, to that final number. So if you shoot over, and the question was to, sort of, what, you know, to ten, ten highest, I might have missed one. I just sort of, I figured it's just a good opportunity to go right to those pages and hit a couple of the highlights. And again, glad to talk about anything specifically. You know, our biggest driver in all of it are contract, contractual wage increases.
I'm sorry, I'm, I don't, I'm not sure where I'm looking, if you.
Okay. So do you have the budget binder with you?
Budget binder? That.
That's.
That's the big, the big, the big book.
You can get one.
Sports.
Okay.
We got them all online. He said binder, I, you've lost me a binder. I love binders, by the way.
I gave you a folder, but I didn't give you a binder.
I was trying to, you know, okay, so it's, it's online. Thank you.
If you go to ncps-k12.org.
Thank you.
And then under Board of Ed, there's a Board of Ed budget link.
I got it. It's on your tablet. Yep, got it.
And then, Brad, just what page you're just.
Yep, so it's page thirty.
Thank you.
In the binder itself. Yeah, thank you.
And you can navigate there through the table of contents.
I've been in your seat before, Reid. I get it. So.
Yeah. Good. The, and actually, on that page, you know, that NCP, the budget page, we we archive the old budgets as well. So people want to see and learn about, you know, sort of past budgets or anything else, it's all right there. The, so why the budget changed on page thirty, the biggest driver that we have are contractual wage increases with our certified staff where we have the step increases. Step is moving down the grid, right, with experience. And our GWI longevity, but if you go down the the other piece to it, it's actually on the other. Okay, I'll just go through that. Yeah, we had an increase in our substitutes. And this has to do with our, we're paying more. We've been paying a hundred dollars since, probably since around the time we bought the projector and the planterium. So we're moving that up to a hundred twenty-five in the hope that it, it brings some more folks in. Because we've really had a very, all districts have a very hard time with substitute teachers and filling covering classes. And now that we're in the season, you know, that we are and between allergies and flu and colds and sore throats and coronavirus is still here, so we're still dealing with COVID. We've had spikes in absences in our staff, our faculty. So hopefully that that should make a difference and help us. Okay, okay.
Good. So Dr. Let's say the hundred twenty-five is for like an eight-hour workday.
About six and a half.
Okay.
Yeah.
Although by.
Just doing the hourly.
It's really more, it's probably seven.
Seven still doesn't seem right, but.
Well, we had to look to see are we hitting minimum wage.
Yeah, I was gonna say, so a substitute responsible for an entire class for six hours?
No, that's, they work generally, they're in the school for the seven hours. We expect them to be there. At the elementary, they're with that same group of kids, other than, you know, when they go to specials, that's about it. So it's a very long day. At the secondary, they may be in and out of some different classrooms depending upon, you know, the need. Generally, they'll fill in for the teacher, but what happens is if we have a couple of subs and we're short, we'll weave them in to cover additional classes as well. Yeah, it's, it's a tough gig.
Yeah.
That's why we we look to hire interns from the colleges, from Sacred Heart, from UB, Fairfield. And what we do there, so we hire the interns who are, they work with us during the day and then we pay to, their their tuition directly for them to get their masters at night at one of those schools. And then we agreed it for them to student teach with us. So when we bring in those interns, we shift money out of our substitute account to cover that, and then we use them to cover, cover classes as well.
I mean, you've had a townwide initiative to try to get more substitutes. And this is the first time I can remember where you're pushing, you know, out to the public, hey, we need help. I mean, it's, it's.
I tried to get my wife, but she, hundred twenty-five wasn't choosing to bite at. I'm sorry.
No, I'm with you. I mean, some people have asked if they could volunteer and do it.
Yeah, it's more of a charity. It's more of a charity.
We also got some feedback on our application process, right? Because, you know, even though we really need people to come in and help, we're also putting adults in front of kids all day. So we do have to run those background checks. We have to do all of that, you know, do our diligence on the front end too. That's a little challenging, but we've had, we had a great response from people. It's been, it has been fun. I mean, there's many parents or PTCs and BFA's stepped up and, you know, they're trying to help us out a little bit here and there. And trying to donate the money back. I I suggest the planetarium, but.
Always.
Wouldn't get in trouble for saying that.
I wouldn't go home if I were you.
Yeah, I mean, you can see, I mean, the, why the budget changed at a glance is, it tends to be people's favorite pages because it really sort of breaks it down, like I said, and you see the up and down. There's a couple of things in note. They, we, there's some questions about the Director of Innovation. So that is a reclassification of an existing position. So you'll see a reduction in the curriculum specialist area there, and then you see the addition, you know, in the administrators there in the above. And that's where the net of that is. It's an existing person who's doing this work who would move into that. So we try to sort of make that clear around where these things, where they're connected, right? So you see that right on the front page, it's the negative one forty-three and then the one eighty-seven is the second one there. But it really is very detailed and specific. And glad to answer your questions. We did not change the employee benefits piece around the deposit towards the ISF. That was the decision of the Board of Finance, which there's some questions on that too that we'll be doing in a minute. But we do, we go to great pains, put all this together. And again, with the budget book itself, I know for some folks, this may be the first time looking at a Board of Ed budget book like this. One of the things, what we try to do after each, before each section is write a narrative that explains sort of the big drivers in the budget, the purpose, and helps to add meaning to the numbers. You know, we say all the time, a budget is a lot more than just a spreadsheet. So it's, if it's the high school section, it's Billy Egan and his team writing that intro. Dave Gussit over at Saks is writing his, Jay Egan for Athletic. So the people who are closest to the program are writing a page or two to, it just explains sort of what, what's the outcome, what are you getting for this investment in the, in the program and what are the big drivers? The, you know, comps, comps are incredibly tricky always. When you, and I was just mentioning before, you know, it's always hard percentages. You have different pieces, but the, as we know, this year is different for us and in some ways, we're said, we're victims of our own success in the past by being a self-insured plan. When things shut down in twenty twenty, nobody was going to the doctor, nobody was do accessing healthcare for a variety of reasons. And so we saved over two million dollars in our self-insured plan, which then we were able to reinvest back in to bring down the budgetary, the need to fund the ISF. So that was a savings, right? And there are some places that don't do that. There's some that leave it in the ISF and and sort of build up a balance and whatever winds up happening with it. But our, our approach is really very formulaic and driven by the policy that we have with the town about what is, what stays in the ISF and what doesn't. And although it can create this kind of fluctuation, I believe, we believe it's, I don't want to speak for you, but it's the right way to do it. Because if there is, there are resources available in the Internal Services Fund, we want to turn them back to the town. We don't want to ask for taxation, we don't ask for funding that we don't need. So if we have a balance of, you know, two point two million dollars in the ISF, after working through that formula, then we give, we give that right back into, you know, as a reduction to the investment that the town needs to make, to make us whole into the ISF, right? So our success in doing that helped to create sort of that, that differential that we're looking at between our funding of the ISF this year and next year. The other piece was around the funding strategy for the ISF last year, right? Where in the spring, the Board of Finance made about a one point nine or so million dollar special appropriation into the ISF to sort of make it whole for what the anticipated needs were for this year. But when you fund through special appropriation, then again, you're creating a cliff because now we're looking, build it into the budget. So it becomes that operational cost over time instead of the one, one time. Now, you know, it, it worked very well this year, and I know the strategy that they have for next year is going to work just as well. It's about sort of balancing all of the needs and the, you know, taxation and the mill rate and all. And, you know, at the end of the day, that's all, well, it's great, as long as the funding is there that we need to run our plan and to stay within, you know, the. you know, the bounds of our risk management strategy. Which is what, what the, the reserves and what that funding, that funding strategy, that formula that we use is really all about. What happens is we have a hundred percent of our anticipated claims. And then we have a corridor of 20% above those claims that we're responsible for. And then we're reinsured for everything over 120%. So we have, we talked about funding those full, those anticipated claims. And then identifying what the corridor is. And funding it, and it's, it's held in two places. So we hold 40% of the corridor, so 40% of the 20%, so 8% overall. And then the town holds 60% of the 20% or, you know, 12%. And they do that by allocating it out of the general fund, right? So it's obviously, I mean, this is very sort of complex, the way it all structured and all worked together. But again, it's our risk management strategy is that, you know, we're, we have, we're responsible for the 20%, but anything above that, we're not. So we wouldn't reserve for what we're not. And the reason it's important, and there are several, but one of the primary is our individual stop loss number is high for a self insured plan of our size. So our individual stop loss, if an individual's costs go above $300,000, then that is covered. And we wind up getting reimbursed for that. But 300,000 is a pretty high number. Years ago, we were more 100, 125, and I think the town runs at about 125, 150, something along those lines. So, I mean, we've done it. So these two insured, insurance plans together, we know, work together to create, to mitigate risk. But a couple of unexpected high claimants, you know, can, can cost you, you know, easily 900,000, 1.2 million dollars. Because you're, we're on, you know, we're on the hook for the first 300,000. So it's where we, that's our individual, and it has to be that high because of pricing. You know, just we actually, we had a number of high claimants recently. So we've come out, come out to the, to the good in this past year as far as what we've spent for the plan and what we've gotten reimbursed. We are anticipating that the cost will go up 50% for that policy, for the 300%, for the $300,000 ISF. And that's built into here and that's, we're getting confirmation on that. But that's again, the way this, all of these sort of, the insurances and the decisions work together to create a system where you're managing risk. And we're doing it, I think, really in very successful and close partnership with the Board of Finance, Board of Ed, with, you know, Town Council and everybody. The we're going to know what the 20% corridor is in May. Is what have, we jointly bid that with the town for that aggregate stop loss. And so we save a little bit by doing it together. And so once we know what that corridor is, that's where we'll be returning to the Board of Finance. And they are, they're allocating out of the general fund, what we anticipate that number will be. If it's a little bit lower, more, we'll go back to the general fund, general unallocated. And if it's a little higher, that's, have to put a little bit more in there. And we're, we'll do that through appropriation. Once we know specifically what the corridor is. Because, you know, when you're developing a budget, as you know, you're doing your very best to be as accurate as you can with the numbers, but a budget is an itemized estimate. So we have the opportunity in the insurance, given the way that the system works and the, you know, the way the external vendor will be giving us that number and identifying specifically what the corridor is. At that point, we can budget to the actual and fund to the actual, I should say, which is, is an advantage that I'm glad we're taking, we're going to be using.
Hi, Dr. Let's see, and everyone else. So I'm new at this. I'm trying to understand, you know, one of the volatility parts of the budget is the, I guess, the $14 million in the, in the fund for self insurance. So I'm just trying to understand with all these things that you said, all these risk strategies and all these wonderful insurances and stuff. How did the number get to that? And, and that's what I'm trying to figure out.
So the, the gap between where we are this year and where we, we are saying we need to be next year, where we anticipate we need to be, really the.
It's, it's the uptick in the budget, right? The $14 million that has to be paid in this budget. That's what I'm talking about. Yeah.
So a couple of things, so that, yep, the funding gap comes from the us reinvesting our savings last year, you know, into this year. And the 1.9 million special appropriation that went in. So those two things combined create that cliff that we have to make, make up. The the budget itself. Yep, Dr. Keating has an excellent handout that's in the folder we can talk about briefly. If we look at the, it's, looks like it's been up and down, like down to around 10 million, nine and a half million, whatever, back in 2020. And that's driven in large part by the pandemic and by the, the lack of utilization during the shutdown. But if you trend out going back from 18, 19 up, you see that we've really trended at or even maybe a little bit below market for our, our costs on our insurance plan. So we've done well, we've done better than you might expect if you only did trend in the market. But it looks like that volatility, but it's, it's due to the pandemic, to be, to be frank. I mean, it really is recent. It's about that, the up and down and the lack of utilization. And in truth, it's a good story. Although it's challenging to explain and there's so many pieces to it. But the good part of the story is if we were fully insured, we would be on a straight trend up year to year. And the insurance company would have saved over $2 million when everything shut down. Because we're self insured, we did. And we're able to reinvest that and save the taxpayers money. So that's.
Because we would have paid our premiums regardless of any, of no claims going in. Instead, because we're self insured, we got to recoup those savings instead of paying premiums to an insurance company.
That's.
Does that make sense? Sorry, I did not raise my hand. I'll do it. Retroactively.
But we did include a graph in the and had we not used that funding of the 2,491. And if we didn't have the special appropriation. You know, our budget would have gone up, actually is going up 998,000 year over year. So that would have been our budget increase. And it really is a function as our actuary goes through our current claims and goes back and works with the last five months. We've had some really high claims and significant high claims, 1.5 million, 1.8 million. And so we've recovered a lot of staff loss insurance, which helps reduce all these claims. However, they're looking at, you know, the gross claims going out and the likelihood of things reoccurring. So you know, it it is something that we looked at carefully and decided it was important just to wait till we had the insurance number. Because that's our true risk. We could guess right now, but it, the true risk will be identified at that point in time. And we will have closed out the year. So if claims improve in the last quarter, from that, we won't need to come back for us.
14 million. We go back to 2019, employee benefits was just over 14 million. So that was the last one we, we had. That's sort of the, you know, been the working base for a long time. And then we had the dip. And then, you know, the gap is explained by the two, the savings from COVID and then the special appropriation.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Can I just got a quick question about just kind of the forecast after lots of. So can you foresee a time in the future where there'd be a break even point where the self insurance versus fully insured? Doesn't make sense for us to be self insured, you know, could be 10 years from now, could be less only, and I say that because, you know, we have an older workforce, right? Certainly skyrocketing costs, medical costs. I mean, they're astronomical. You know, you get cancer. I mean, my father-in-law is a particularly bad kind of melanoma, and it's like 50,000 per treatment every other week. You know, so plus we're in a COVID era. It's not post-COVID. There's another wave coming. It's on the way. Like, we're going to continue. This will roll on for a long time. So I'm just wondering, in your opinion, projecting out, do you think there could be a break even point where the savings aren't making any sense for the town?
It's a great question, Mike. It's something that we do talk about. We asked Joe even this year to take a look at the state plan. If you're aware, Connecticut has a state plan that many districts did move to because they found that, you know, there were savings in that for them. And that's a fully insured plan. There's some subsidizing, subsidizing by the state that helps. We look at it though, it would, would cost us about three million, I think, was the last number I saw. So our plan is efficient enough that we're about three million below that. If the time comes where this, whether it's the state subsidy or just the numbers of people in that plan, you know, trying to distribute the risk and all of that. If it looks like that's a good move, then I know it's something we'll take a look at. The, there are some districts that move in and out of self insured versus fully insured more regularly than that. I know Dr. Keating has done that in her career. You know, so that's something else to look at. For us, if we were to do something like that, you know, there's a lot, there are a lot of questions we'd have to answer, right? So what's the move back plan? Right? So our plan right now is, is really pretty well structured and pretty efficient. And I think most of our employees are happy with it. And they, they're partners with us in it, right? So it's part of the reason why it is more expensive for us to go to that state plan. If we do go to an alternative plan and then we find that it'd be better to go self insured, can we step right back into the same plan? You know, those are the things we'd be negotiating with it. But we do regularly look, we use the state plan as a guide, to be, to be honest. And I think that's a pretty good one because the districts right around us even have gone to that and they've saved significant money by doing so. It just for us, we're not in a place where we save us.
I want to, I just have another question about Open Gov. And I had asked that question and there was an answer about it, that you have a comprehensive budget on the website and things like that, which, you know, makes a lot of sense. The open, open gov website or portal allows people to kind of do their own charts and work with the budget and it's not a static. You know, this is our budget. And I think it kind of increases engagement in a lot of our competitive towns near us have that. So is that something that you would think of, of moving towards rather than it just being a budget that people can kind of? I mean, I love my binder, by the way. It was great. Loved it. I felt like I was in elementary school. But, but, you know, you can't, you can't move around the numbers. You can just kind of, you know, so, so Open Gov gives you a chance to make graphs and charts and so, I mean, just as, as we're always kind of at the forefront of everything in New Canaan. And is there a way that we could move to something that's much more dynamic for, for like, you know, the citizens, residents to play with the budget? Talk about it, move it around, things like that.
Sure. So the system that we use, we use the MUNIS system now, which is pretty complex. And it's, you know, certainly there's a, a training and a capacity need there. You know, we, it's something that folks use regularly, you know, in the fight, whatever, open, this isn't something I'm really all that familiar with. So you're saying that districts around us are using it. I'm glad to, you know, take a look and talk to some of my colleagues and see how it, how it acts or interacts for them and with them. You know, I think that, yeah, as you see, as you saw in the response to me, I think I'm proud of how open we are with what we have. You know, I think that the website and the, the history that's there, the binder that's put together, I think, is very comprehensive and thorough. But if there's, you know, a need for something else, then we'll, we'll take a look. So I'd be glad to take a look at it.
It's the town that we played in the Turkey Bowl.
The one that lost?
Yeah, I mean, you can just, I, there's a link there. So you can look and, you know, it's, it's just, um, yeah, it's, it's for the whole budgeting process. It's not just for the board event. So, yeah.
Okay, so we have hit the 906 mark and I know we've got some more business to do tonight. So Brian, I think it's a good time to wrap up and we will have you back again for sure. So is there anything that, in the binder that you want to draw our attention to, to read before you come back?
You know, I guess the one thing, if there was one thing there that I would, that might, I think might be helpful, that I put in there, the, the questions that the Board of Ed asked as well. There's another pretty kind of comprehensive, you know, set of questions. That there were some connections between the questions you were asking and the ones that they were. So we, we, instead of saying, see page six and whatever, we just put it, you know, sort of answered through. But, you know, if you're interested in kind of seeing, learning a little bit more about, and that's in some ways goes a little deeper in some of the questions, like a little more specific, because they had the budget workshop and the Board of Ed was, you know, involved on the, on the bill then. So I think you might find that helpful.
Thank you very much.
Any, any sound off for Brian before we send him off?
Thank you very much, Brian. Thank you, Katrina.
Thank you so much.
And again, we'll have you back with you, you know. We love seeing you guys, we love seeing you guys, but, you know.
So if I'm sitting alone at dinner before your next meeting, it's because.
You are always welcome, always welcome. Thank you again. All right, next up we have Park and Rec. You guys are sitting so nicely back there. You brought a lot of support tonight. You got the whole, you got the whole gang here. All right.
A lot here, so we need a lot of people.
I know we are an intimidating group up here, I'm gonna say. Very mean.
Just Robin.
Thank you very much for having us. You know, for many years I've worked for the town. And I've always considered I had the best job going in the world, not just for the town. You know, how many places can you go and you improve everybody's free time? And that's what I was able to do with facilities. But now I found out there's even more to that. You know, I'm being involved in the programs and everybody from the rec department. It, it, it's actually, it's very good. So with that said, I do have to thank everybody from the rec department. Bill Cap, their Assistant Recreation Director, Steve Dayton, Program Coordinator. Aggie Aston Wall from Lapham. And there's other people, you know, even, I have to even thank Todd in the Parks Department because those guys have all stepped up since I haven't been around there as much and everything. So it's going very well. As far as your budget's concerned, you have a very comprehensive budget that Steve Banko put most of the work into it. It was already done beforehand. We did make a couple of small minor tweaks to it, added some more money in places.
So John, before you go too far, let's get everybody on the right page here. Where in the, where should we be looking? Just so we can follow you along.
I have no idea.
Okay. Okay, page thirteen of our, of the binder. Binder, okay.
Our Sir Recreation.
So it's the rec one?
Right, yes, rec.
Okay, good. We've got it. Sorry about that.
Most of our, most of our increases are due to COVID, minimum wage changes, that type of thing. So we're going to go through a presentation. Privacy choice they're giving me here. Okay, um. So let me share our screen. Bill, Bill Cap is going to go. There. Okay, Bill, it's all yours.
So we have, we have experienced a great rediscovery of our beautiful outdoor parks and activities. When the yoga studios closed and restaurants twined down, they all came running to our parks. And we just had a wonderful time. Up the bus road, you know, as people were just flock to the park. Food trucks, funny enough, and these are trends as we work through the pandemic here. The food trucks emerged as an alternative to the indoor dining, which is great. Mobile as they were. Our seniors are back, returning to the Lapham Center. Hooray. They've been hanging out at home and now they're back. And boy, did we, we, we buried the, the record book in tennis, pickleball, paddleball and all tennis and racket sports. We had a up to here and we really bounced back. Program wise, and it's really exploded. I'll have some more charts for you later. And childcare is a necessity, absolutely. We're experiencing remarkable increases in our core programs and the largest of which is our tennis program, which is up 144%. And that was everybody getting outside and and getting into that tennis program. And I got to say that it was predicted. And I think if we can sustain this growth, quite frankly, because it's become a big fat now in town. And you can see a few other of our programs are quite, are quite by quite amounts. But going forward, as we examine our sales and usage at the Need Park Tennis Courts, it's clearly skyrocketed. And this early spring 2022, registration is already at 95% of last year. So we're very happy. Our sales are huge and our enrollment and usage are huge. And as well likewise, the chartered results at the Waviny Pool up, doing well, more passes sold last year than ever. And I think we've got a hit still there and it's a wonderful facility for us.
What was the name of that pool?
Yes, this report was done prior to, yeah, sorry about that. For our budget, we present to you generally one big bump change in, in the administration section and subsequent smaller requests in our other divisions. It's nice to be placed right behind the Board of Ed with a hundred million dollar budget, where we could talk about the simple. But in fact, I'll just go over briefly with you what that is. Our civic activities have presented no change. In the administration, we have, as everyone else does, a July 1st minimum wage increase along with utilities increases. And what we're going to talk about a bit is our largest increase, which is $160,000 to a line item, other classes and programs. This line item expenditure supports the hiring of our independent contractors who are separate from our part-time employees. This line item expenditure supports the hiring of our independent contractors who are separate from our, uh, part-time employees. There are three reasons. First, we left too many people on waiting lists last year because we didn't have the money. So I don't want to do that again. I hate that. And, uh, you know, we're adding money to offer additional classes and not turn anybody away. Two, flexibility, giving us more opportunity to offer new programs. And a big example is pickleball. We built those courts, but we never funded it. So, you know, pickleball is the fastest growing sport in the United States. And third, the pandemic scare chased away a lot of our teachers. So we have to unfortunately use more independent contractors now, and that's in fact where this account helps us to, uh, to provide the services that, that we want. And this specific account will fund all of these improved services. In the Wavine House side, the rentals are returning. We need, uh, to refund, we need to refund part-time salaries and overtime. In the paddle tennis weekend have wage increases. We had some repairs in there for replacing screening and resurfacing one court. And our park buildings are increases are needed in refuse service for Wavine House, utilities, fuel, oil, propane and electricity. Lapham Center, the classes are returning. We'll need an increase in part-time salaries and social security for all that staff. At Kiwanis Park, again, part-time salaries with the minimum wage. And our total budget over seven divisions is up 10.8% or just $216,000. One last slide for you is, uh, is returning to our largest, but largest budget request, which is other classes and programs. And John, you can put that up. That there is, we do return much needed revenue from our programs. And this slide presents our projections where we ask for more money, but we're going to give you more money back in revenues. And that was important for us to show you that we do generate a lot of revenues in this department. That being said, that's the end of my presentation. If you have questions or John, take over.
Yeah, we're open to any questions. We'll be glad to go through all the different categories underneath the recreation department too, however, whatever you'd like.
Yes, our liaisons, uh, are in constant communication with, uh, Park and Rec. And, you know, one of the things that we get on a regular basis is a unbelievable report from, uh, Robin, uh, pretty much every month about what's going on. So, um, we appreciate everything you guys are doing. So you guys have, you want to ask any questions about revenue or budgets or operating?
Are you thinking about that? The one part we didn't go through is the pool budget. It's under a special, special fund. We did make some changes from the liaison meetings to that. Some additional cleaning of both the locker rooms and the pool itself, just the main drivers.
Just real quick, could I understand? So on this last slide, you showed expenditures revenues for other classes and programs, but what about your main budget? What, what's the impact of revenue on, um, how much of the growth is offset by revenue? I guess is the question.
So, uh, all of our programs run positive. It's, it's the other stuff that we, that, that does cost us money. So if, if basically we have 160,000, we didn't project the revenue to be that high. Just because we'd rather be on the conservative side, but we're going to be, going to be close to that. By adding that extra money, the good part is people want to do programs. They're back again. And if that for some reason dries up, we won't, we won't be spending the money, but we want to be able to allow people to participate. Do we foresee that there'll still be waiting lists? Yes. There still will be some waiting lists on, on programs, but we don't have to say we can't run it. So we can run a pickleball program, you know, we can run the more tennis programs that were run last year. So.
I think one thing that, um, well, first off, I think it's not funny, but tennis, was it three years ago? They were considering removing what? Two courts? Putting in volleyball court and then because no one was using tennis. But I think what some residents don't understand is that because I know when I put paddle and others, when they're trying to get these programs, they really don't think make money. And the, the thing is the funds do go, but it goes into the general fund. It does, it's on enterprise fund. So it doesn't go back into paddles.
We don't get the money directly, but.
So I think residents just don't understand that, that we increase the budget for programs. It does go back to the town. It just doesn't go back to that specific fund. Yeah.
And that, and, and we feel strongly that we get tremendous support from the town too. It's not like we're standing up here saying we don't have any money, you know? The town supports the parks and the recreation.
But before in the past, if Steve wanted to add something, he'd have to get a special appropriation from the board of finance. And I always put him off. So that's where this increase would help just add more right away come July.
So to that point, are, are you asking for enough money to fund the programs that you want to put on and to satisfy what the community wants out of our rec department?
We believe so. You know, it unprecedented changes on how people have come back as quick as they have and everything else. Yes, we think so. Part of that's the shift of also hiring contractors versus teachers.
Sure.
So, um, but yes, we think, we think we're going to be good.
Good.
Let's go to Christina.
Just a quick question. As far as maintenance of the pool area and the bathrooms, have you increased it so that there is sanitary conditions at all times?
Yes. What, what we're proposing to do is we're going to increase the amount of cleaning of the locker rooms themselves in the outside area. That, that's done with an outside contractor and there's going to be some days that we're going to have somebody on duty all day instead of coming in in the morning, cleaning, coming back midday. There'll be an attendant per se. So, um, and then the pool itself, we're going to be doing more vacuuming. We're going to have the company, a pool company come in and vacuum the time. Part of the problem is the amount of time a day that you have to get that done.
Is the YMCA, will they be using the pool as well early in the morning?
I think they want to. I'm meeting with them on Friday, but I would, I'd be surprised if they didn't want to come back again. So, and that, that limits our time on, when we're able to clean.
Yeah, but also that Steve would go in and check not only the temperature, but all the other equipment and that is covered?
Yeah, we'll get that all covered. Yep.
Good.
Well, that's one of the things about, and Christina asked the question and it rings in my head because, uh, we had a former town council member who really took that on as a, as an initiative and, you know, and she's out there somewhere and I hope those bathrooms are kept clean because otherwise we're going to hear about it. So.
I'm going to hear about it.
Let's, let's keep up with it.
Yeah.
First of all, thanks for explaining things because I was, I hadn't been as close to it. So I saw the 10.8% and then you really explained it very well. And and looking at the revenues, that's helpful to see as well. Um, just curious to Hillary's point in terms of what the community wants, how do you determine what the community wants? Are there surveys? Do you like, what, how do you determine what those needs are?
Well, surveys is one way that that happens. The other part is simple things. Um, talking to other people in other towns, what's coming, coming forward? I can tell you five years ago, I didn't know what pickleball was. So, and it's that type of thing. You just, you know, it's anything and everything from the Connecticut Recreation and Park Association to, you know, talking to different people in different places.
I, we, I meet with all the senior directors of all the senior centers in Deerfield County and we talk about what programs are working, what programs are not working. What are you doing next? Can we share in that program? Um, things like that. We're working towards trying to get trips going. We know we can't fill a bus right now with one, with New Canaan, maybe New Canaan and Wilton will work together and we can, we can do more trips that way. So we do, we do talk to each other and see what's working and what's not working. And then we also hear from the residents a hundred percent saying, you know what? My mother in this town does this, or my friend over here does that. Can you get that going? And then we work on it. And that kind of money, the better teachers you get, the more people like the program and they cost more money.
Yeah. I know Greenwich has like that aging, um, department or it, it's all about providing services for seniors.
Things, things change, you know, as, as time goes on, you know, some programs you'd never think of, of running, you know, so.
And some things working in Stanford, but they won't work in New Canaan. And so what works in New Canaan will run it and see if it goes. And then if it goes and we get a lot of people, then we, we add more sessions and more time.
It's almost like an open door policy on a daily basis. If someone has a special interest, come in. We'll look to see if we can pull it off. And, uh, and listening, listening to the people and drawing things out of them. But that's how we, we, we keep on the cutting edge.
Thank you.
Maria.
Um, two things. What's the split on the pool membership between in town and out of town? Would you?
I don't know offhand, Steve.
I'm just curious if it's increasing.
We're going to do another hundred out of town residents. Uh, we sold roughly 700 family passes last year for the pool. So one to seven, roughly.
Okay. And the other thing was, I know we were sort of talking about events at Kiwanis. So I don't know if that's built into this.
We have a bunch.
Yeah, there's quite a few different things like that, like the library and their programs that they've done in different places.
Well, like we were talking about the hot dog, you know, evening events with the little kids having.
We've actually teamed up with the newcomers, the library. We're going to run a bunch of different events.
Right. We're doing some intergenerational programs with the seniors and, and the library. And so we, we reached out with the nature center too, and tried to do some intergenerational now that it may be safe again to do that. So that, so that all, we, we collaborate with all the other organizations and agencies in town with, to do programming, especially with the library being under construction. They've been using Lapham for quite a bit of programming, um, for adults.
And they're going to use Kiwanis for programming for.
Kids.
Just, just not on Wednesday night, do it on any. Wednesday night.
And actually to that point.
Yeah.
Um, speaking of Kiwanis, I have, and I forgot, I'm sorry. I didn't think about this before. I have been approached by several people who their, their parents are younger parents with younger kids. They love Kiwanis. They would like to see it expanded, like they would like to see the hours expanded. They would like to see more there. They would like to see it probably a little, a little more upkeep as well. And so I've had several, um, parents, mostly moms, uh, approached me about that. So I'm just, I just on their behalf, I'm curious if there are any plans for a different, you know, similar to what you said.
As far as, are you talking as far as capital improvements to Kiwanis or as far as changing the hours?
Expanding hours and different programs.
Right this minute, I can tell you, I'm new enough at this that I, I, I can't see us making a change for this coming year on the number of hours.
It's something that you might be aware, just in terms of listening, you may want to.
There, and there is.
That is something, maybe a pent up demand.
Introduced George Bennington, the chairman of the Park and Rec Commission. And he gets to do a walkthrough down there.
Uh, Kiwanis on Saturday at two o'clock, 26. So if there's some interesting young things we'd like to participate and provide some feedback and ideas, that would be great.
Fantastic. I'll let them know.
What we do is we kind of filter that down and work with John's office and.
You may want to just put something on, I'm not kidding you. The New Canaan moms, we just put it out there. They will come. Because that's, that's kind of the central communication point for the moms in the, um, area and they, I'm telling you, they will be interested.
Last year, uh, the Park and Rec Special Commission, um, led by Hank Green had put together a big pow wow meeting and a, and a great report on options and, and new things to do down at Kiwanis. And we picked apart a few of them for last year. But there is a, there's a full report that we had put together. And, and we can go back to that along with adding new ideas, but it was very dynamic. It was, it was talking about adding flotation devices and slides and maybe waterfront, um, things for the children. But it was, it was a great idea to bring new life to that facility.
Thank you. Any other questions?
He does have a comment. I just want to say I'm looking forward to pickleball. I love it. There's a huge demand. So I've already taken, I, I took class last, uh, in the fall and I'm, I'll be doing it again. So thank you for doing that. Great program.
One of the things while we have George here and, and others, uh, we'll be talking about the, the playground initiative that Waviney, any, anything you can add, George, as far as Park and Rec. I know you, you had the presentation.
I believe it's in the budget.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, okay. And the, the reason why we're doing the playground is obviously the, the adult exercise machines, like 10 years old and it's runs.
Yeah.
So, and then gives the kids an option to play when their, their older brother, sister or something is playing.
Playing sports. Okay.
So, uh, something that makes a lot of sense been discussed for quite some time. And the fact that we can kind of kill two birds with one stone, I think will be.
Yeah, because some of the equipment is hazardous there and we need to, need to figure that out. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And while I have you, I just want to recognize too, your, your commission is doing a great job. It's Carl Mason, Gene Goodman, uh, Francesca Sagallas, Jack Hawkins, Steve Haber, not Haber. Matthew Conspor, Ronna Siegel, Hank Green, Jake Grino. George, you're the chairman and then Keith Ritchie. And, and you know, we get to see your meetings sometimes. And as I said, we get a full report from, uh, Robin, but the work you guys are doing to make the parks and everything you do in town, uh, wherever you go in town, you know, where, whether it's Waviney or any of our, or any of our parks, it's really amazing. So thank you for all the initiatives, uh, and all the work you're putting into.
And I also want to, with special mention to John for stepping up this year under very sudden, very sad circumstances. And he just stepped right in and that was huge.
Yep. And we appreciate it. And you know, it was so amazing over the years, sitting here, usually it's one guy presenting this thing and to see one, two, three, four, five. Someone, someone mentioned that might happen. So.
So next year's.
But thank you all for everything. And, uh, again, we're right on time. So thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Next up. DPW, we've got Tiger Man coming up. Good night, Aggie. Thank you for coming.
Yeah.
Tiger. All right. Well, this is our chance to have some follow-up. We had the full blown presentation, so we're not going to keep you as late as we did last time. So.
That's okay. I just had a P and Z meeting, so we're, we're good. What do you got?
All right. So, um, I know, you know, Tiger had his full presentation. So if we want to just, you want to flip back to, if you want to go right to the budget book and look through, um, questions or Josh, tell us again what page the, uh, Tiger. It's done. Okay. Thank you.
Tiger, just for the, sure, for the sake of public, because on the way out last time I meant, I asked about the capital and the, the, and if my numbers are off, please correct me, but, uh, $300,000 for the lights at Dunning and, uh, or the 400,000. 450 and then the 300 going to the NCAA, which would also go towards rehabilitating that area. If that was, you know, if doing any work on the lights would create an issue for that rehabilitation of field. And you said, no, I believe.
No, that should be an enhancement to the answer for both, because once they go to do, uh, the press box in the area, the enhancements there, they'll be looking at, uh, the new lights themselves can, uh, handle like a light show or, you know, strobe lighting. They could light them up with different colors. That kind of upgrade the, uh, the NCAA is proposing to pay for. All right. So we would be looking at just installing the lights and then, then, uh, if you wanted to have a light show or if you wanted to have uplighting, say red lighting or brown or black, you know, to change the colors just to match, uh, you know, what was happening on the field, so to speak, um, they would be paying for. So it kind of goes hand in hand for what they're looking to do as well.
Can I ask?
Go ahead.
A related question to the lights at Dunning and you might've gone over this and I apologize if I missed it. Why is that part of the town's budget and not part of, why is that not the athletic foundations or the board of Ed's responsibility? Why is that part of the public works budget?
It's a good question. Somebody else asked it prior today. Yeah. So the, uh, the, um, the genesis of it was that Dunning was, uh, an enterprise zone standalone, right? It was never part of the BOE.
Okay.
When it was originally constructed, it was constructed with, uh, completely, um, donated monies. And then for a number of years, uh, up until the last time when we just redid the turf fields, uh, the booster club, they would rent the fields and then they would take the money and the booster club would pay for any work that was done in and around, uh, Dunning itself, excuse me. And then when the turf field had to be reskinned, then the NCAA came forward, um, donated those monies and then partnered with the town on reskining, uh, turf field one, building turf two and three, and then redoing the track, right? And expanding the track from six to eight lanes. And at the time they were thinking about putting a turf field inside the track as well for field hockey. That's still an outside, um, thought. That's still an outside thought going forward, and that was kind of the genesis of the NCAF. And at that point in time, an MOU was developed between the town, the BOE and the NCAF whereby they would start raising money. Because this gift will need maintenance later. So as they're going forward, now they take in all the revenues that used to go to the booster club to pay. So they're taking the revenues, 50% are going towards new initiatives, 50% are going towards ongoing maintenance. But the thought is that, and then waving, excuse me, waving, Dunning proper was then at that point in time given over to the parks department. So last year, we added monies to John's budget for some maintenance at Dunning, both capital and operating. And this year we added more monies in, so you'll see a bleacher line item in there, that's not only just for bleachers throughout the parks. But also for Dunning itself, and then some additional maintenance that's going on in Dunning also. And the thought is that the lights are 25 years old, it's our responsibility now, so it falls to us. It's difficult to ask the NCAF to come forward and take care of an asset that's already 25 years old and rebuild it, right? It's a question of after we rebuild it, then we can start talking about, you know, ongoing maintenance going forward. But at that point in time, once the MOU was developed, the maintenance and the expenses for for Dunning itself fell to the parks department. So we pay for the lights now, we pay for the maintenance, excuse me, we pay for other things. So it's it stands to reason that it would be in our budget to to pay for the the expenditure.
I mean, the short answer is we kind of outgrew it almost, because when Dunning was established, it was just Dunning, that was the only piece of turf we had in town. And all of a sudden, you know, you blink and, you know, we've grown this to, you know, college campus status. So, you know, it needed to have this athletic foundation stepping up and really running it as an enterprise zone is really the the. The key to getting this all in one bucket, if you will, so. Very good question though, cuz I I think that's something historically that people will be asking, you know, long after we're we're gone, so.
Right, yeah, it's just a genesis of moving forward.
Christina.
I have a general question about the sewer fund. When you, when fees are shown as total sewer fund revenue. Are those revenues used to pay out other expenses? Or are they put in a fund for the reconstruction of the of the water treatment facility? How does that work?
So we have a, our revenues there are are septic fees. So people who are not on the sewer system proper, you know, the rhinoseptic system, they get pumped out once a year, so to speak. They come down and there's a per gallon fee to pay. 85% of it goes into the major maintenance fund and 15% goes into the operating side. So it'll it'll drop the operating expenses, goes into the, goes on, goes on outside, it's not necessarily, we don't see it. Cuz it's it's basically the same thing that happens with recreation, right, goes into the sewer fund itself. But 85% of it, when we originally set it up this way, 85% would go into the major maintenance fund and 15% would go up to offset current operating expenses.
How much is in the fund at this moment?
About $3 million, 2.9, I believe.
So, okay, I'm not understanding the numbers and maybe I'm just misunderstanding them. But you have. Okay, so let me ask you, what is the income derived yearly from the fund? Or added to the fund?
Added to, I I don't know what it is, if what what our estimate is for expenses.
No, 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 what? I'm looking at this, the two, Josh, is the sewer fund tax collector the amount annually collected? From the. Okay, so if it's 1.9, why do we only have so little in the fund?
That's the expenses, that's the combined expenses between the the tax collector or certain. Part of her operating is is her operating expenses are covered by the sewer funds and she's collecting those fees for us. So that's offset, that's offset as well, the the total at that time, as Josh mentioned, is 1.9 million dollars into the of operating expenses. Right, this year we have, we have about, yeah, 1.1 million dollars, last year we had about $800,000 that was offset from the major maintenance fund. So it's not brought forward to the users of the of the facility through the sewer use fee or through an increased septic fee. We haven't increased our septic fees in quite a while as well, we've been trying to keep that flat also. You know, so we make a nominal increase to the septic fees commensurate with what the the sewer usage fee is. And sewer usage fee, we we divide that back in based upon the number of facilities in the district. And for the past couple of years, we've been on a on a chart that was that we had produced for a three year phase in, right? So each year we we changed the the residential fee and then the commercial fee, we would just increase nominally. Say 2%, whatever the growth was in the in the sewer, in the sewer fund itself to offset it. So that was, that was your sewer use fee, and then whatever revenues we come in, some of that drops off on the operating expenses as well.
So the pumps that you're replacing is coming out of the fund?
It's coming out of the major maintenance fund, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we've been, we've been using the major maintenance fund for. Close to a decade now, you know, whereby all of the expenses, since since we knew that the plant at that time, that the the. At the institution of this idea of having a major maintenance fund and taking the septic fees and putting it towards that. We knew that the plant was gonna age, so now the plant's 20 plus years old, we're getting into larger maintenance items and we don't necessarily have to then backcharge. And it, any of the users, because we've been able to set up this major maintenance fund going forward. So we've been able to offset our expenses throughout for a number of years that in that way.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi Tiger, I just have a general question about the roads, since they're so important to people. I was just wondering, is there any way for residents to find out when their roads are gonna be paved? And like if you're gonna be doing town, you know, Elm Street, things like that, is there some way for people to find out? Or is there something to set up so that residents can see what's gonna be happening?
All they have to do is call. Where they are, the next five years mapped out, so we map out five years every year. So this year I've got mapped out 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, and I can tell you where 27, 28, 29, 30 go based upon what what I know going forward. So it's a, it's a cyclical event, as I, as I mentioned, every, we touch the roads every five years, right? So we pave it, five years later, I crack seal it, five years later, I put a micro thin overlay on it, five years later, I put a crack seal on it. Five years later, I'll put a cap seal or a mill and pave, so I can tell you exactly what's gonna happen to your road. Or you could just do it that way as well, you can necessarily say that when my road was paved last time in 2014. Well, then she's gonna be paved in 2024 on or about, right, based upon what we see.
No, it sounds like you have a great system in that map that you showed.
All they have to do is call, we, we at one point in time, we had posted what we were gonna do and then we had to make changes and that. That made the phone ring a lot because. So the thought is we have the list, I know exactly what we're planning to do, and if they call, I can tell them where they are, or if I have to make a change, I can tell them at that point in time. Sorry, your road was supposed to be in 2022, it's gonna go to 2023 for whatever, for these reasons.
That map that you had was really interesting, that had the different colors when when roads are gonna be done, and I guess I just have a suggestion. And I, people can certainly call, but if there's any way that for IT to set something up where people could kind of click on their road and know what's happening. You know, what the, what the future is, but then the, and the other issue is when Elm Street is paved and other things in town are paved. Is I read about it in the newspaper and and is there some other way to give people any kind of notice on like what's gonna be happening? Especially if you're in major arteries around town.
It's a great question, so I send a letter, Kevin and I send a letter to every resident of the road that they're gonna, what we're gonna do on their road. So the resident gets a letter saying that we're gonna pave your road, whatever it might be in this, in the approximate schedule. Cuz it's very difficult to to nail down a a true date, you know, as we get closer to the actual paving date, I can tell you exactly the paving date. But so we give them a ballpark figure as to, we'll be starting, say mid-May, it's gonna run for four or five weeks. But I also have a Twitter feed. So if you subscribe to DPW Twitter feed, you can, you know, so you'll get, if there's a water main break, I will tell you that there's a water main break. And I'll tell you exactly when the restoration is and who's affected. And then once I get the time of restoration, I tweet that back out again, if ever source is working, I'll tell you that as well. So we do it for road paving, as long as, you know, the the information flows to me, then I can flow out. So sometimes ever source makes a move on where they're gonna put, stage their crews and I find out late, but the moment I find out, I'll, I tweet it out.
That's the best real time.
Is this Tiger Man?
It's a, it's a real time source, so it's, it's well done, so it's probably the the best information you get, Rita.
Since we're doing the Ask Tiger Man hour. Question for you, someone approached me, it's great being on town council, because people just approach you with all kinds of questions. And he was someone who is not on sewer right now, and it's, and it's, to be honest, I forget the areas up near Canoe Hill. Yeah, and and so I guess his question was, when, when? If ever, is that gonna, is that gonna happen for that?
I don't believe there'd be, there are plans, there are not plans to expand that far. The the only way that you're looking at it, an expansion of the system, that that's quite far to get to Canoe Hill, to be quite honest with you. At present, there's adequate septic, right? So this, you know, whether their their existing field or there's a, there's a spare on the on the premises itself. The the process there is twofold, if your septic is failing, the health department will make a determination. And if they make a determination, then it comes to engineering and we'd make a determination whether or not we can actually either A have capacity or B, we can reach the unit. Normally, we wouldn't go that far, right, we're we're talking one to two residents outside or parcels outside the existing. Infrastructure or the the existing district itself, so I I would, I would have to tell him that he's, he'll be on septic for quite a while.
He, and he has had some issues, but I was just, it's good to know that.
Right, so in order to try to bring a pipe that far out, we, you have to imagine that every single person that touches that that pipe at that point in time. Is automatically in the district, right, so moves all the way through, so we would have to add every parcel along just to get to them. The cost would be astronomical to get there, it'd probably be a lot cheaper to rebuild this entire system to 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 actually build that, build that far out.
Thank you.
So so before we get to capital, any other questions on operating, so we'll move on to capital after this, so, okay? All right, so Tiger gave us that great presentation, if you go back to the March 16th meeting on your iPad and you pull up his presentation. You go to page 52, I think, is the capital ask, so. Part of it, so that's the admin engineering part of it, and then we can, we'll just run through those just to make sure that no one has any unanswered questions, so Mark, go ahead.
Tiger, the drainage improvements, $100,000, what is that? What does that get us?
It's a good question, so what we have is we have a, we normally have had $50,000 in that line item for quite some time. We upped the ante this year to $100,000 because part of our. MS4 permit or municipal separate storm sewer system permit with the Connecticut DEP, it's a five year permit. That's re-upped, every five years, there's a reporting system that has to go forward, we have to annual reports. Our draft report is right now on the town website, if you'd like to go take a look at it, it's this, it's a great read. Late at night, it's a great read, the. But the other $50,000 to actually start mapping our system, right? So we have a map of where the catch basins are and presumably where the pipes are in between them all, okay? And we have some mapping of if a development was put in, we know exactly where the drainage is, but for the majority of the town, we do not. So one of the requirements is to actually map out the entire drainage system itself. And that means actually opening up a catch base and seeing exactly the size of the pipe and the type of the pipe it is. And then seeing that it flows in this direction and then go mapping again, so we have broken it down into a three year phased operation. Where we will have a consultant come in, tie and bond, is our GIS consultant come in and do that for us. The other $50,000 is basically maintenance of the system, right? So so far this year, I think I've had three or four catch basins, maybe a half a dozen that have already, you know, that have collapsed over the winter. Had one on Jonathan Road on Sunday that that opened up a hole next to it that was, that we sent our crews out that night to go watch it off. Cuz it was, you know, you could have lost a small dog in it, you know, so to be quite honest, so that goes into just that. So small drainage projects in and around town where we see a need. If I'm, if I'm paving a road, I'll take care of the drainage on that road at that time, and these are for other areas, other areas of maintenance or or other small installations.
Do you see that number going up or this, I mean, I do, as you're looking at the issues with the water treatment. And the the surge that you get during storms, and I go, I gotta imagine that this number is gonna have to go up in order to satisfy.
No, that's a different, it's a whole different system, yeah, we are, we are not on a combined system, so we don't have a combined sanitary and storm system though. Other larger towns, my cities, New Haven has it, Bridgeport has it.
As people are pumping water that should go through into the drainage system.
Quite possibly, yeah.
Through to the sewer line.
You're talking a capacity, if I, if I take all that out.
Yeah, you think about areas where people don't know where to put their water and you're basically. Assuming that they're putting it into the sewer line through, there's some pump in their house, if there were drainage around their homes, better drainage. You wouldn't have that problem, is that something that you think is gonna?
I wouldn't say it's better drainage, but in in certain situations, we we lack it, so they don't have a place to place it, you know, on Kimberly Place. We had a problem where they didn't have a, we had to extend the drainage system to allow them to hook up, you know? So then we said, we're gonna put the drainage system in, we need to have every single sump pump hooked up, that's your responsibility. We'll put in the drainage line, you come in and hook up your uh, your sump pump to us. So yes, eventually there'll be an expansion of the system, the majority of that work will probably be handled while we're paving the road, right? Because if I've gotta go in and dig up, you know, a lot of pipe in order to do it, at that point in time, the damage will be enough where I I time it to pave it with the road. And that normally would fall right at the road bond itself.
So I'm thinking about the roads in around town where you're about to repave them, if there isn't adequate drainage, are you?
If there is, if there is, if if it's proven in areas where we have inadequate drainage, we upgrade the drainage at that time. So we go in and we TV all the lines for the roads themselves, right? So we'll go in, we'll TV the lines, make sure that they're good, so I, cuz I don't wanna pave over the top of something that's collapsing. So we go in and we TV the lines, make sure everything's, is is good or copacetic, and at that point in time, I'll pave the road, if not, we'll fix that area and then pave the road.
So that cost is not in this.
That is no, this is, uh, these are one offs areas throughout town where we might have a bleed coming out onto the road. We had a, we had a situation in Kiwanis where we were draining water from our parking lot into the Mary B cabin. And it was flooding the Mary B cabin, it was actually icing up over the top of the brick walkway, so the Girl Scouts couldn't walk in and out. So we took care of that, that money came, that money paid for that, you know, that installation.
I just, I just feel like the surges are gonna get worse, not better in and around.
We're aware of that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you, I know you're aware, I'm just, I'm just, I I mean.
That's one of the reasons to map it all out.
I've been in town, it's like last year was amazing, but.
I'm only here seven and, you know, Rita and I, both of our field grass and the flash flooding. I mean, you guys did a fantastic job, I, new drainage, new, everything you just described, we're, we benefited from exactly what you just said. Which is fantastic, the roads and sidewalks, everything's amazing, but from south down into field grass, the the flooding is just insane. And it's only gotten worse over the last couple of years.
Yeah, and people are just accepted, they're just saying, I'm gonna bail out my, you know, they're just expecting that they're gonna have to bail out their their basements. And it's, that's, it's kind of.
Right, well, that that was my, my point is that what I think is happening is my sump pumps, I have no place to put it, I'm just kicking the can down the road to the neck neighbor. I'm just gonna stick into the sewer line, which I know is happening, I mean.
So that's why when you're saying that entirety responded, it's the same sewer line, like the sub pumps go somewhere, they go to the sewer.
Right, they shouldn't be, they should be going into a drainage, right, I'm just thinking.
It's the more that they're pumping out to the sewer, that they need to be more commercial breed or a larger or a better system.
Well, at present, what they're doing is they're putting it into the sanitary system, right? So sanitary system goes to the plant, so what they need to be doing is they need to put it into their detention system. Their detention system has an overflow which comes into our storm system. So to Mark's point is that if I get everybody to take their sump pumps and out of the sanitary system and put it into the storm system. There will probably be a need for an upgrade of the storm system at that point in time for conveyance, right? Cuz you'll start to tax the system itself. So that's one of the reasons why we're looking at the survey as well, so we can know exactly what we have, right? That's on the ground, and then we know exactly its age, its condition and its size predominantly. Then at that point in time, we can plan accordingly to see areas of concern and then areas where we need to upgrade. Right now, we're attacking them on a one off basis, resident calls, we got a complaint, we have an area of concern, we're looking at that and focusing on those areas. But eventually, you're right, you know, once we have the INI study, then we'll know the areas of concern, then we can go and attack both the sanitary and the storm. Sorry, Maria.
I'm sorry. I was just curious. Is it because of all the houses getting bigger and their foundations and?
The less porous area water has to go. It's gotta go somewhere.
We have a, we have a drainage policy since nineteen ninety nine. Mike Pastor and I instituted it back then. Whereby it's considered zero increase in runoff, right? So anything that you add to your house, any impervious area. So if you add an addition, if you add additional driveway patio, things of that nature, say an outbuilding, that's increased the impervious area. At that point in time, you have to mitigate anything above what the existing condition was. And now our our town engineer Maria is looking at saying, we not only want to see what you're mitigating now, but any plans that you have for five years in the future. Right? So that you're not just going to mitigate this, you're going to mitigate more, right? Or tell us what your plans are mitigated now. And then you're allowed to continue to go forward with your permit, what have you. So the thought is that, yes, we uh, we're trying to take into account that growth, right? Whatever that growth factor might be, we're trying to stay at a stasis point, whatever we are at right now. So at that point in time, if you put in a larger house, that change is the tension system that goes into play, right? So that's really that that that's the crux of it at that point in time. The only problem we have is climate change is making it so that the storms are more intense. So while we're staying at a zero point, the climate is not doing the exact same thing, right? So the storms are harder. You know, Idaho was four and a half inches in an hour and a half. It's unheard of, you know.
Hundred year storms every three years.
Yeah.
That's been the argument, right? Yeah. Idaho was just under a two hundred, two hundred year storm, depending upon how you calculate it. You could say it's two hundred just under. We say it's just under two hundred, but you know, it wasn't the only one of a hundred year nature in the year.
So if I may make an observation or recommendation, as far as um, I can't tell you how many times I've seen the truck Connecticut basement systems and the way that they install it drains through your septic line. So whether you're in town or you're out in a four acre zone, it's going through your same piping system. I don't know if it's PNC that needs a regulation or if it needs to be an ordinance that needs to mandate that the line be hooked up to whatever line you wish it to be hooked up to.
Well, we can ask him back. I had a, I had them Connecticut basements came in and did a did my house and uh, it didn't go to the sanitary, wouldn't allow it to go to sanitary. It went to the storm. But you know, we can certainly talk to um, to Larry, I guess Larry Janeski, right? The um, and make it known. The part of the part of the INI study will be the second phase of that is the first is to study the system and see where we're having a problem. Then the next is to go and see exactly why we're having that problem, right? And at that point in time, then we can attack every resident and say, hey, you gotta help us out. So they, while the regulation is would be helpful, the problem that we have is more on a public education and outreach, because if they don't understand exactly what they're doing to our system, they, the moment we walk in, they'll disconnect it from where shouldn't be connected where it should be. And then we walk back out and they'll put it back to where it shouldn't be anymore, right? And we won't have any idea until we see it registered at the plant. So it's to me, it's more of a public education and outreach, right? A little bit of a push and pull. This is what we done at Kimberly Place. We just met with the people, said, this is what we're going to do. We're going to ask you to hook up to us. And then once you have this permanent connection, you no longer have to worry about it in your house, right? We're going to be taking care of the rest of it. And it seemed to work well there and we'll we'll do the same.
I I'm just recommending that we look at that for more than just like Kimberly. I know you've done it a lot.
Oh, no.
I do think that that is the crux of the problem is that people own a home that they don't know is going into the sewer line because they don't know that there's a drainage line or there isn't a drainage line. That would be what I think the problem is. And it's only going to get worse with the there's more incentive to just leave it as it is with the storm because you know the water is getting off your property.
So so when you hooked up the line to the the storm system, the problem is that if the water level rises to a certain level, your basement is the lowest point. It can back up and flood your basement.
Usually there's a backflow preventer, but yeah, there is the possibility that that would happen. Most of the detention systems that are built have a backflow preventer, which will prevent that, right? And you're hoping that the capacity, you know, your engineer has calculated it correctly. So the capacity is correct, right? If it's not, usually all of them have an overflow system where the pressure should drive it forward, right? The head pressure should drive it forward and not drive it backwards.
Correct. But it but it that has to be part of the education.
Yeah.
That there has to be a proper installation with a backflow preventer in order to avoid a catastrophe in your basement.
Never know what we'll discuss during budget season. How deep we'll get.
Well, I can, we but we can't add. So I'm just saying, I I foresee an increase in the budget going forward on certain line items.
Flag for next year.
I see a town ordinance coming our way.
Eventually, yes, you will see one. But we have to get through the study first. Once we get through the study, Darian's going through the exact same process. They're just happening to be a little ahead of us. But they're doing the exact same thing. And and there are model ordinances associated with it. So yeah, you, part of that, you will see. You've already done some for us for stormwater. There'll be others coming forward, you know, specifically for this.
Awesome. All right. So on this slide, any other questions as far as uh, fifty-two? Sidewalks are always uh, point of uh, we always ask for more. So hopefully three hundred thousand is giving you enough.
Yeah, the well, yes, at present, it also comes down to, you know, how much, how much we have in the pipeline at present, right? So the um, the thought is we have a a lot of them out out under design right now. And uh, that will that will feed next year's capital request. And that might have to move a little bit. You did add three hundred thousand dollars ARPA funds to take care of one large installation, which is Old Sanford Road from um, Bristow to uh, to Gower itself. But we have others that will be that will be looking at phasing in some we might do while we're paving, like Lakeview Avenue, right? If I pay Lakeview Avenue next year, thought is I'll put the sidewalk in at that point in time. If it's approved to go forward, it's under design at present. But yes, there'll be others. Um, right now, we're trying to focus on maintaining what we have, right? So right now, out to bid is Farm Road from Main Street to South Avenue. It kind of fell apart over the winter. So next week, we'll receive the bids on that. And then that'll drive our decision making going forward based upon the the numbers that we see coming back from our first bids of the year. I have a paving bid coming back tomorrow that'll uh, excuse me, on Thursday, that'll tell me exactly how um, how that's going to drive what we're going to do for the rest of our our schedule this year as well.
I mean, like, like our parks, we, you know, they received all kinds of use during COVID. The amount of people that were out walking on our sidewalks during the last couple of years. And of course, going forward, people want to get out and they want to walk, they want to watch their dogs. They want to be out there, you know. It it's amazing the increase in joggers and walkers out there. I mean, it's so the more we can do to support that effort. I mean, it's it, over the years, we've improved it a lot. So we are all behind uh, increasing sidewalks when when appropriate. So.
Yeah, I had a gentleman call me today to thank me, well, called me to at first ask about the application we had before PNC for the shed roof or the canopy roof for the Parks Department. And then said to thank, you know, to say thank you for do redoing Field Crest and Village, you know, and that, you know, turned it back into one of the most desirable communities, you know, subset of the communities in the in the town. And uh, then if you look at, and then there was a woman who spoke on behalf of another, they have been PNC from Brinkerhoff and Mortimer saying the exact same thing, right? All this, all this, you know, neighborhood in town. And then we just rehabilitated it and we'll repave it in about next couple of weeks to a month. And it'll be completely redone. So what was originally installed and then you you'll be looking at, that's another area that'll drive a, you know, people's wants, so to speak. So it's been, it's been a very good initiative.
All right. Anything else from that slide? Or we move on? Uh, I think if you jump to uh, go ahead.
But I missed, I want to point out the obvious, though, the more sidewalks we have, that's also going to affect the permeable area, right? Isn't that?
That's that's if we
That in mind when you.
We do keep that in mind. Yeah, the uh, my my town engineer is uh, very cognizant. So every area, we're trying to get to the point where we get to what's called disconnected impervious areas, not to give you an acronym, because I'm sure Dr. Letty gave you a ton of them, but the uh, DCIA, which is taking in, so having an impervious areas directly connected to each other, you try to separate that, mitigate it, slow the flow down and then have it travel to the next uh, impervious area. But uh, the majority of sidewalks we're doing are replacements or um, they're inside the existing right away that's already. So if the pavement width was thirty plus feet wide and we don't need thirty feet of pavement, then we'll put in a sidewalk adjacent to it and then reduce the the width of the roadway, but not necessarily increase the uh, the uh, the amount of impervious material or impervious area.
Town buildings is up there now. Any questions there?
Is there any use? I'm sorry. Is there any use identified for Waveney House?
Well, they gave you a, the market study came in.
Yeah.
You know. So that was, I think that I think that case study brands give you a great, you know, synopsis of what is possible. You know, we just have to make the building compliant. The more, the more we make the building compliant, the more they can do with it at that point in time. So you'll see it, you know, drive usage of Waveney going forward, I think. Yeah, I think they're they're one in the same, right? We have to kind of make it so that people can get there and utilize the building. And then at that point in time, there'll be more more use of the building, which will drive, you know, that going forward.
But because the atrons are on the second floor and there's no elevator, how are we meeting the code?
That'll be the next phase. You know, you can certainly, you know, help petition to bring it forward. We had thought about combining the two together into one. Um, the first selectman was uh, debating that as to whether or not to bring it into one initiative. And uh, at present, we were saying that we'd just like to continue going forward with the momentum that we have. So to go forward with one, by the time we get done building one, we might be back to ask for the money midstream to ask for the money for the for the elevator itself and then put the elevator in as we go.
And the elevator is still in the center of the stairwell.
Yes.
It is solid. Correct?
Solid.
Yeah, it has walls.
If whatever the committee, whatever the committee whatever the committee approves, this what we'll be constructing.
So I mean, it's a par- parallel track, right? You're running down the track on one side. We're prepping this building for its eventual use, which you know, we've already said weddings or whatever. And you know, on the other side, we're researching how to use it. And we had faced this issue years ago where we said, do we want to spend, you know, in one lump sum thirteen million or whatever that giant number was. And everybody sort of said, oh, my gosh, we can't do that. So we've sort of piecemealed it. And we're actually getting there as far as uh, you know, that we've done the roof, we've done the envelope. Now it's the ADA and we start checking these things off. And all of a sudden, we're uh, we've got a building that we can uh, use. So.
Well, we still don't have the air conditioning and.
No, that's, you know.
Again, we have a, we have money to study the HVAC system that was in a previous budget. So we're going forward and studying that. So we have a plan to go forward when and if everyone wants to. And we have money slated in the out years to do that work. So I think it's not next year or the year after. I think it's around three point five million dollars for that exact for, well, it's redo the entire system, the entire HVAC system, which would include air conditioning at that time. So the thought is to put units in the attic and units in the basement and then they can go one floor, right? So they could take the first floor and the second floor and work that way. That way we wouldn't have any penetrations in the roof. We wouldn't have anything outside. We have everything contained contained inside. But the thought is that once we get done with the study, we'll have an idea and a plan so that when we want to implement it, we can. So it just comes down to at that point in time, trying to balance out to Steve's point was, you know, do we come forward with it? It was closer to twenty million. You come closer to twenty million dollars in one shot. Or do we chew with the apple as we go forward? So the thought at the time was to chew at the apple to go forward and not necessarily do an entire twenty million dollar allocation away. You can argue either either way, you know, to be honest with you, you know, the um, but at present, we're on that path to try to chew away at it. So we're planning for the next phases as we go. I'm hoping that we can kind of bring the elevator forward a little bit, but that'll be a decision for this board, you know, this council and and the Board of Finance to see what what uh, what the palette is.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
You want to flip to uh, highway? That was pretty straightforward.
Strictly replacements, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, how about transfer station? This was the mower that mows at an angle, so.
Yes, it is. Exactly. Yeah. Won't flip over with a guy on top of it because the slopes are quite steep out there. If you've seen them.
All right, then parks. Any questions on parks? Getting pretty straightforward.
Can a six year old operate any of that equipment? Kidding. Put him to work.
Yeah, we talked about the Donegal Stadium lights. Uh, any, any questions for Tiger while you're on the Waveney Park playground?
George, a nice job, you know, summarizing the the view from the commission itself. We did um, we did push this offer deferred from last year to this year. So it could go back to the commission, commission reviewed it and came back with an unanimous vote to say, yes, they wanted to go forward with it. So that's why it's here. And I think it's a, as George mentioned, it's killing two birds with one stone, right? At that point in time. So I think it's a, I think it's a good project.
Maria.
I just want to say, uh, I can't believe how long it's taken to get a playground at Waveney. I mean, I think back to two thousand and five and gazillion kids on the field. And I'm like, where's the playground?
Strong suggestions, you know, you know.
That's a great. I think it's a great idea. And the kids were using the adult equipment like a playground. So.
That was our, that was our concern, right? And then we, you know, we had, like I said, we had some injuries and and it's it's just not designed for a child, right? It's not designed for an adult and you know, and it's a fitness equipment. It's not necessarily a playground, right? So the uh, the 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 feeling was that, yeah, you, you know, everyone usually has a sibling, right? And the sibling is left to their own devices, right? Which is not necessarily the best thing to do in the middle of the park.
A bathroom and a playground. Those are like.
Which one?
I love working out outside, but uh, you, like, people come from the surrounding, not only in our town, Old Stanford and sunny area, they bring their kids there, like the yes. So it's not the intended use. Okay, do that. And you could see the children are harmed.
Tiger, on a previous slide, you had ten million mark for the police building with an asterisk. What's that all about?
Ten million mark for asterisk. So thank you. So what it was was inside there basically was not included in that four million dollar number, right? So it, the the building's number was four point three four eight million dollars, not including the ten million dollars for the police department. That's all it was. The year prior, we had done the exact same thing with the seven and a half million, right? Because it just skews the it it throws it so far off that when I put it on a graph, you, it doesn't work anymore, right? So and then what the Board of Finance did at that point in time is combined the two years. So they had seven and a half. We had seven and a half in next year's budget. They combined them together. So now it's a seventeen and a half million dollar allocation. Um, Bond Counselor told us we need to do it all in one shot. When we go to um, actually construct the building, the, we can't necessarily hire the contractor without having the monies available, right? You can't sign the contract without having money is available. So it stands to reason that while we showed it across the board based upon what the expenditures might be, the allocation or the authorization has to be in one lump. So the Board of Finance had put it all together and send a clear message to the to the to the people, to the residents that they're that they're committed to going forward with the police department. You know, and what that construction will be will be up to the police building committee and others at that time. But so that's, that's the thought. That's the reason for it. It's just, you know, it just skews the results. I put it on a graph.
But are we talking about the police department in place where it is now?
It has not been determined its location or even if if it's going to be a renovate is new, build is new, renovate is new, renovate in place or a separate location. That'll be, that'll be um, determined in the next, probably in the next month, couple of weeks to a month.
What other location is being viewed?
There were three other locations that were deter- that that were that were looked at quite heavily. One of which being the the woods on outside where the BOE building was going.
Right.
Present in the back there. One was Saks, another area was um, so third top of my head, I forgot. But there were three that we went in depth on. We went to, we started at sixty plus and then worked our way down and got down to a final three.
It was thirteen and then there was three.
Thirteen and then there was three. And then that three shuffled a little bit and we came back with another three. Uh, I think that was Locust Avenue. It might have been the other.
Yeah, if you recall, the council, that was thirteen and we picked three to look at a little closer and then, you know.
Right. So it hasn't, at at present, that that final decision hasn't been made yet. That'll that'll come out in the in the wash shortly.
Are you in the committee? Um, just a follow up. Is there any money being spent on that project right now?
Yeah, there's some engineering. We have two separate engineering firms working. One was working on the the sixty plus locations throughout town to make sure that we had vetted everything properly, right? You don't want to go and spend twenty million dollars at the existing location and then find out that would have been cheaper or better someplace else. And then we had someone looking at the existing facility and how much that construction would be. So it's two separate firms. And then associated consultants with that, whether it be traffic or whether it be um, an envelope consultant. We just had an envelope consultant look at the existing building to see whether or not, how An envelope consultant, we just had an envelope consultant, look at the existing building to see whether or not, how much that would be for us.
And do we know how much money is like what that, that price tag is right now? It's being spent?
Yeah, I can give you an accounting, you know, that, that there was $500,000 allocated two years ago towards engineering.
Right.
For this effort, right? So that, that's part of it.
Yeah, I just, as you know, I'm just concerned of money being spent on something that the town is clearly not, you know, going to be. Anyway, I'm just concerned about the money that's being spent toward, you know, this, this project.
Thank you. All right. Let's see. Parks.
Parks equipment is next, right?
Yeah.
Oh, after infrastructure.
Yeah, I mean, the, the infrastructure we've talked about at length, I mean, the 300,000 and 300,000, I think, you know. My, the, the NCAF and the Wavine Conservancy, the idea of having, you know, a, a 300,000 put aside for both of those entities on an ongoing basis. Makes a lot of sense because, you know, you're, you're talking about two of the areas that were the most, or are most heavily used in this town, so.
They both have viable projects in the pipeline going forward. The conservancy should have one coming forward. Quite rapidly as far as looking at the entrances to, off of South Avenue, that's probably their focus right now. Apart from the service entrance that we're partnering with, and then that should be this year. And then June of 23, the NCAF has a plan to come forward with the Dunning Stadium one where by the concession stand, the press box, all that area, the restrooms, all that area will be redone. So they both have viable projects going forward and the fact that the town sets aside money helps them with their fundraising as well. Because it shows that in their, in their parlance that the town has skin in the game, right? They want to see, donors want to see that the town has skin in the game. So by doing this, we show that.
All right. Any other questions there? All right. I think nature center is probably the next one up.
The nature center is just a basically a synopsis of what we're doing at the nature center. It was all included in the building site. So it's just, I break it out just so you can see what we're doing. But the $200,000 was, was taken out for the Audubon house. And then we basically have three roofs that will be taken care of and then some painting and repairs of the Herb Cottage. Your cottage is right next to where the greenhouses are or the, where the, I should say, the community gardens are. And then the visitor center, we need one portion of the roof to be fixed. The cider house has, has a hole in the roof we need to repair and then the rock house needs the roof replaced. So, but the Audubon house at present has been, was tabled and the board of finance and this board said they just wanted more information. So I reached out to Bill Flynn from the nature center. He's met with his board and will come forward with a, a more comprehensive plan to get a little bit more. You know, shed a little bit more light on it, what's going on. And at that point in time, we can decide whether.
That was his idea of having a summer program there and there was some question.
Summer and, yeah, it was a preschool, pre-k, pre-k twos and threes throughout the school year and then summer programming.
Right.
So, and then what that, what that entails and, and how much revenue that'll generate for them and what that, where they'll spend that revenue. You know, right at present, they're saying they'll put it back into the campus because they have to. They put it back into the campus. I think it's a, you know. It's a, it's a good, good source of revenue coming back in. It's, it serves a need and then it actually helps us maintain the property, right? So.
All right. Any questions there? Sewer. Doesn't sound sexy, but it's very important.
Right.
Uh, any questions there? Okay. That I, the best, the best thing is to see that stop sign.
Yeah.
You and me both, yeah.
Thank you, Tiger.
No problem.
Any other questions? All right. You're free to go.
All right. Thank you very much.
Really appreciate it. Thank you. John, thank you too.
Thanks to John. Thank you.
All right. I swear this is going to be short. Committee reports. Let's blast through these. Bonds and ordinance. Well, after we hear from, you're going to talk a little bit.
Sure, you can go ahead.
Will you, can Robin go first? Sure, sure. Robin, you're up, you're up.
Okay, hold on. The conservation commission meeting, we had two meetings last week, it was a special meeting. Chris Schiffer was voted in again as chairman, Susan Schweitzer as secretary. We discussed the oil spill which affected Bristow. Connecticut deep estimates 250 gallons were spilled. It was an outdoor tank, the residency that was 325 away, feet away from the pond at Bristow. It's the first time Kathleen Holland said she's ever seen anything like that. Pondier pathway resolution was approved by commission and goes to board of management. And then Linda Andrews presented on gas powered leaf blowers and commission voted unanimously to set up a presentation to the. And the commission's recommendations to the town council ordinance committee. Phase two of Bristow works been delayed because it's been too late, too late. There is a location for a swap shop and transfer station has been located and work should be going on that soon. And then parts and rec, they voted that their meeting will be changed from 7:30 to 7:00. There was one dissenting vote on that. The Waviney House presentation was given that we saw, except the tent was taken out. I don't know if anyone remembers that, but we had the tent in our presentation that was not in the parks and rec presentation. So I guess they, they're not thinking of doing that anymore. The commission.
The wave any house use.
Yeah, the, the, the presentation we had with the two women from Greenwich, when they presented to us, they showed the tent to their questions about that. In the parks and rec presentation, there was no tent. And all of a sudden they were talking about smaller weddings, so people won smaller weddings. So I don't know if that meant they just decided after feedback not to do that. But that, so I don't know what that meant, but that was out. Price of weddings was increased, but there'll be a $500 discount for residents. So for, it's 5,000 for Fridays and Sundays and then 5,500 for Saturdays. And then residents would get $500 discount. The question was asked, who rents Waviney for weddings? And B of the rec department did say it's more, she didn't give the exact numbers, but it's more. Non-residents and residents. The upstairs bathrooms were discussed. Tiger just left, but he was being estimated at $900,000 to redo those bathrooms. Ice rink didn't open and that was an issue with the transformer setup with ever source and the chiller had a missing part. So everything will be ready to go though for next season. The only issue and Rita, I know you're involved in it, but that the advertising for the interior panels was given conditionally on the year. So there's going to have to be brought up again to parks and rec. And then of course, John Howe was both as his intern, recreation director as well as parks director.
May I just say something regarding the rental of Waviney House? Those prices are not aligned with, they're not competitive because we don't have the chairs and the tables and the china and all the other things that a club would provide.
I think B said during the meeting though, that was brought up just, and they are so far, she is still. They're so far out, they're still getting a lot of interest and a lot of people are still renting. So they didn't think they, that was brought up, whether that would be too expensive, but she felt, she felt they felt it was in line. That there would still be people renting for that amount.
I, I disagree. My conversations with Tucker and the comparisons that I gave of the clubs. I specified that without waving increasing the quality and the options of the furniture, there's no way that you're going to have happy renters.
Right. I, but this was the price increase, not, not from the, the presentation. They want to do more, but obviously they needed elevator and AC before that. But this is what's discussed.
But I also feel that 5,500 for a Saturday is fine for an out of towner. But a 500 discount to a local citizen is exorbitant. I think we need to lower it for the residents. It's, I, I think it's unreasonable.
I'll have to get to parking wreck on that.
Especially if the majority of renters are out of towners, that's fine, but you should not almost charge the same thing to the residents who are paying taxes to support it.
Right, yeah.
So just, you mentioned the, the rink and the advertising. And I don't know, Rita, I didn't realize you were involved in this, but the, it's really important that Park and Rec understands. We mentioned this once before, there's an ordinance in town about advertising. And that advertising ordinance is in place for a reason. If you look at Mead Park, Wallace Park, you look at Dunning Stadium, you look at, just go around this town, there is zero, zero advertising in our parks. So, and, and the reason for it is, you know, this date's back forever. And it's a very slippery slope if you allow quote unquote temporary advertising in our parks. Because every baseball season is temporary. So the minute we say, yes, it's okay for the, for the rink to go, then you don't think, you can't have baseball and you can't softball. Every single organization in this town isn't going to come in and want banners along the outfield. Just, it's just temporary. So I mean, it's just a very, it's a very, very important. They don't realize how important the decision is and you can't override an ordinance with a temporary. It just, you know, and we need to discuss this before it happens because it's much easier to go, you know, cut it off before it happens. So I just want to make that clear.
I just wanted, I also want to clarify too, it was the only thing that was allowed was inside the rink, so not outside.
Yeah.
Inside and it had to be taken up every single night.
Okay.
So this isn't like it's.
It's there all the time.
No, and it's also not outside. It's only on the inside of the dashboard. That was our own, that's the only thing we could do and it had to be banners that could be taken up.
Got it.
At night. So it's a very, very temporary.
Yeah.
Now that still might not be what, what the, you know, in the, in the.
Well, the spirit of the.
Spirit of the ordinance, but that was just to be clarified, that's what we were told. It's not temporary for the season.
Right.
It was temporary, like literally it has to come up every night.
Because, you know, for, for a year, the idea is for years, it's got to look natural. Everything in this, the parks, it has to be green and natural. And we talked about it the other night with the, the, just at Irwin, talking about, you know, just the, the boards for a boardwalk. You know, everything in this town is, it looks like this for a reason. So just, you know, I would mention it again and make sure that we, that we're on the right track.
Yeah, I don't, I disagree and, and we have, we have some time because it's, we have some, you know, well, I would say till October.
Yes.
To figure that out.
Sorry, didn't mean to go on a tangent there, but it's a, we, we've talked about this for years and years and years. And, you know, there's a lot of advertising that could be done, but it's, it's not done for a reason.
Well, Parks and Rec only voted for this year and it didn't happen. And George Bennington did bring that up most, meaning he reminded that you're going to have to come back to us.
Right.
So.
I know there, I know there aware of it. I just.
And, and some, actually there's some good points that were brought up on the other side and we don't need to discuss it now. And I'm not saying, I'm not selling or buying here, but it is a longer discussion we should, we should definitely have.
Yep, got it. We can have it in another meeting. All right, is that it, Robin?
Yeah, that's it.
So, so today I was startled when my lawn care people came by and cranked up those leaf blowers. And it was really, really obnoxious. I even got a call from a neighbor complaining about some of the leaves being blown on from my yard into her yard. So I'm very aware this is an issue. So that we're, we're going to take that report from the. It's conservation commission and Hillary and I are going to report back to the ordinance committee and with some kind of a schedule for hearings and whatever. We'll, we'll think it through, but we'll get that started up once we get through budget season.
Yeah.
I just want to say that the snowplows were quite loud during the storm, also very early in the morning.
Hmm. Okay. Who's up next? Education? And I think we talked enough about that tonight. Finance and government? You have nothing. Okay. Health and human services.
Yeah, I have a brief summary. So Kevin came to the meeting in the beginning of March and he talked about how he met with Silver Hill. Chief Prolokowski was there, Dr. Lutz, he was there, Dr. Pierce, Bethany Zarro, who's head of human services. And the NCCF was there and they met to discuss this idea of setting up an acute diagnostic center for residents in Ucanen. It would be open, the idea was that it's open 24/7 so that residents would be able to go there and get an evaluation and then be referred out to another. Yeah, other providers. So that was something that would fall under ARPA. Another thing that was discussed that I think is important to just to tell all of you is that the Waviney healthcare proposal was discussed, which is also designated for ARPA funds. Dr. Pierce, who's head of health and human services, made it, made it clear that the human services was the referral source for the town. So he didn't think that this idea of a behavioral navigator, which was proposed, was going to be something that was needed. But one interesting thing that, that I thought was helpful was that human services was giving, given feedback that they could market themselves differently. To the wider community so that other residents knew what they offered. Not only if they were in need, which they serve a lot of, they do a lot of great things for people in need, but then, you know, there's other preventative services that they could do, marketing themselves differently. The last thing that I just want to say is Greg from, is the new counselor for kids in crisis at the high school. He talked about how he had met with 46 kids in five months. And unfortunately, he said that vaping is a huge problem at the high school and continues to be so. That's it.
Yes. No, I have to let Steve call me.
Thank you for expecting the rules.
Just to clarify, some of those things sounded like operating expenses that people are requesting to ARPA. And we were looking more like jumpstart things, right? I just want to clarify, like the first, the 24/7. Space that would be, what was it? A referral service? You said that would be funded through ARPA?
Well, it's a partnership with Silver Hill. And it's not really a room. It's just that they would be providing services to the town and maybe with other towns as well. I don't know the details on ARPA, but I thought that was designated for ARPA. The other proposal was made by Waviney Healthcare for ARPA funds and it had many different components to it. And one of them that was taken up by Dr. Pierce was to say that what we already have in place will, is the, the referral source for the town. We don't need to put more ARPA funds into hiring someone who's going to be like a navigator, because they're already doing that. If that makes sense.
Yeah, I was just. Thinking, clarify that going forward when we do start talking about those funds. Because it seems like different things are coming in that are really operational, but you know, we want to find things that are capital and can sustain themselves going forward.
Let's see, land you some rec. We did public safety, I think.
Just the police building committee that was on for Thursday, that meeting is being canceled. We're waiting for the Hoffman report, which is the envelope report to come in and then we'll schedule the next meeting and issue our agenda.
Great, thank you, Mike. All right, we can, library project. So Mark and I are on a, on a Monday call. You've seen the, the progress on the library. Everything's going within, within budget on time. You're, you're going to start to see, as Lisa mentioned, some decking going in, roofing coming in. There's a, there's a rafter raising beam that's going to be signed by anybody in town that wants to put their signature on it. And we'll raise, we're going to raise that beam up, I guess. Stairs and elevator are beginning to take shape. You could see the, see those starting to, to come into play. And then they've got a complete site. All the mechanicals are going to start going in, all the underground conduit utilities and all that stuff are going in. So that's happening sort of over the next three to four weeks. Marketing that. As you drive by, I mean, it's amazing to see that coming out of the ground. It's a, it's a, it's like a beehive of activity over there. And Lisa will be back with a presentation on legacy and, and updates after budget season. So keep that going. And I think that's it. I just want to mention that, the, go ahead. Oh, no, that 20, the other thing on the agenda was the security. We're going to do that on Thursday. Chief Prolokowski is going to join us via Zoom. So that's now on our Thursday agenda. And if you look at the Thursday agenda, just look forward for a second. One of the things that we're asking for on Thursday is we've got the public coming, it's a public hearing. And let me just pull it up here. Here, I got it right there. You got it? Sorry, had that screen up before. 24th. Down the bottom here. Okay, so put the, the public hearing is on, it's at 7:00 PM. So that's really the public's first and best way to get to us as far as. Input on the budget normally. input on the budget. Normally, you know, in years past, we've had this room full of people commenting on the budget. And they've come out for supporting whatever, whatever they want to support. I'm not sure what to expect on Thursday. I mean, we could have full room or we could have no one here. So you'd be prepared to, uh, listen and, and the, the public would weigh in on any initiatives. Basically, anything on this entire budget is up for grabs. So anybody can walk up and, and voice an opinion on anything from flooding to sidewalks, to streets, to whatever. So, um, the schools, whatever. So that's the, the towns and the, and the residents and taxpayers' ability, it's really their, the main ability to come up and, and voice opinions. So I'd encourage you, if anybody wants to, to be heard, that's the meeting to be heard. And then we'll move into the, the rest of the, um, review. You've got your agenda there as well. That's, uh, after public comments and public hearing, we go into the budget review. At that point, we should all have, uh, we basically have an open floor discussion. And those of us who have done this before, you should come prepared with anything that you want to discuss. Brian will be back, um, with Q and A and I'm sure Tiger will be available. But that's sort of the last chance to go through this and put everything together, um, as we go into making this, uh, budget real. So, um, again, we can only cut, we can't add. And, uh, so it's our job to, to give it the final look and.
I'm assuming that Kevin will be here as well.
Kevin will be here as well. Yep. We could talk to him. The, then we move into, um, security with, well, a-actually, I think what we'll do is we'll vote to move Leon up in the meeting. So he doesn't have to sit through their budget talk. So we'll get Leon in and out. Um, and then we'll, um, go into executive session on the New Canaan Playhouse and real estate negotiation. So.
To that point, just, and, um, if anyone has any questions, Mike had said something out for public safety. I, I had a couple of minor questions that, that we'll want to address. Nothing major, but if there's anything you guys want to, um, ask, just.
Sure.
Send it to Mike.
Great.
The public comment comes first, right?
Yes.
So if they have questions about the security cameras or anything.
Yeah, basically, I mean, it's, it's, it's an open mic for folks to, you know, and we'll give everybody two minutes. But, you know, if you, if there's an issue that they want to speak passionately about for two minutes, it really is their chance to get up and, you know, you could take your two minutes and thank, you know, thank Board of Ed or thank anybody you want or whatever. It's, it's really our only time, I think, during the year where you can basically get up there and pretty much address almost anything for two minutes.
Normally it's not a back and forth, though.
No, no, it's two minutes and we'll have a timer on. So, I mean, if we have a room full of people, we're going to have to go boom, 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 boom.
Is that typical? Like, how do people know? Like, I don't, like, it's in the paper.
It's posted.
Honestly, the rant, the average person would not know.
Nothing we can do about that.
Yeah.
It's on the website.
I mean, I'm telling people. I know, I, I, I think we could be more active, I mean, if we wanted to.
Well, I don't, I'm not looking to be here until midnight. So, I mean, I, I get that, but it's.
That was my caveat.
Government calendar with the agenda posted, like people, it's one click.
Just, well, just curious. And then is it typically, there are typically a lot of people here?
Uh, if there's a controversial year, like if we're, we've had the, you know, we've taken on school start times. We've taken on budget cuts to Board of Ed and, and there's been some, been some, you know, PTC and, you know, and you've got a big email that goes out to say, hey, go speak in support of Board of Ed. I don't anticipate that this year, but, you know, we've had, we've had issues where those doors have to be open. So people can, can stand out there and, and come in.
People can zoom in now too.
Yeah.
And we've been here past midnight.
Yeah. So, I mean, I don't know if it's, if it's the one day that everyone can, I mean, why not? Like, that's.
Well, yeah, I mean, and, and listen, you know, I, I mentioned that because I want, I don't want people to say, oh, I never had a chance to, to, you know, voice my opinion. So this is, you know, they can also write us an email. I mean, they can send an email, you know, if they can't make it or they can't make it on Zoom, send an email. And, and the email address is on the website. So we read every single email we get. So without fail. And I know you all do, so. Um, any questions? We almost did this.
We have to vote.
No, so we're not voting on, this is, this is, um, that this townwide security initiatives were, were, that's item number, it'll be number four at the next, uh, so. We knew it was going to be late tonight, so.
Perhaps the IT, Chris from IT can come and answer some questions.
About the budget? Cause we'll have Chris back. I want to have Chris back on security issues and we can.
Later?
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah. And we'll have Stacy in parking and so we'll, we'll, we'll be inviting a bunch of people back to, to spend some more time. Cause for new folks, it's nice to hear about what's going on out there. So if there's, we have to let these guys go. If there's any other, any other comments, motion to adjourn, I need Christina and Mark seconds it, all in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Pam, thank you.
Thank you, guys.